Okay, good evening and welcome. This, my name is Paul Alpert and I am the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Needham Planning Board. It is Tuesday, February 1, 2022, and it is now 7:07 PM. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. We do have a hearing that was continued from our January 18, 2022 meeting, which we will take up first, it was scheduled for 7:00 PM. So we will take it up as soon as I finish my introductory remarks with regard to the application by Hearth Pizzeria with regard to outdoor tables. So first, let's confirm that we have a quorum of the members of the Planning Board. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Jean McKnight?
Present.
Natasha Espada?
Present.
Adam Block?
Present.
Marty Jacobs?
Present.
We're all here. We have our Planning Department employees. We have our Planning Director, Lee Newman.
Present.
And our Assistant Planning Director, Alex Cle.
Present.
As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. And for each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. That concludes our introductory remarks. So we will now take up the first item on our agenda. We have a public hearing, the continued public hearing, scheduled for 7:00 PM. Amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special Permit Number 2006-04. Sol Sol Family Foods LLC, care of Ivan Milan Pulecchio, doing business as Hearth Pizzeria, is the petitioner with regard to property located at 974 Great Plain Avenue. And Mr. Pulecchio is present, or is it Mr. Milan Pulecchio? Whichever way, he's shaking his head, which says either way is fine, it sounds like. So I'll just say Ivan, welcome, and you have the floor. This is a continued public hearing. We got started last time, and so I'll let you bring us up to date. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I mean, everything is still the same. We're still trying to acquire the patio area so that we can continue our business during the weather permitting days or months. And I know that you were going to look at some paperwork to try to understand a little bit about the easement. That's kind of like what it was left last time. So we're just awaiting on a, an answer.
Yes, so we did get copies of the, of the, of the cross easements between either your landlord or your former landlord in the Town of Needham with regard to the use of that area, which is behind your restaurant, between your restaurant and where the parking lot actually begins. I believe all the members of the Planning Board have had an opportunity to review them. And everything looks okay to me. We did mention last time, and we do have a condition in the proposed decision that because this is a cross easement with the town, you do need to get permission from the Select Board, which I'm sure will not be a problem. So other than that, I have no further comments or questions. So if anyone else from the Board has any comments or questions? Yes, Jean?
Yes, it was helpful to have the plans sent so I could understand where the easements in question were located. The construction plan that was sent does show apparently some parking spaces in easement area, easement area B. But I had a very hard time whether I had it on my screen and tried to enlarge it or just made a photocopy and used a magnifying glass. I could not read what was in those spaces that looked like they were marked as parking spaces. It looked like there was one, two, three, at least four of them.
Jean, I think it says Simon.
Simon? Oh, oh, very likely. Okay.
When I read that, that's what I saw.
Uh huh.
But I just came back from the optician, so that might explain why.
That might help. But it was in the application, it was said that none of the area was presently used for parking. So perhaps that was on the plan, but it was never actually accomplished?
No, Lee, pre-COVID, those were parking spaces. And because of COVID-
Well, that's what I want to understand.
Yes, I remember, I remember being there. There were spaces that were marked for CVS and spaces that were marked for Hearth Pizzeria. And they were, they, they, they were parking spaces. Because that's, that's what the easement was about. It gave, it gave the town the right to put parking spaces there. And then in exchange for that, the town gave Simon as the landlord and of course as tenants, the ability to access the adjacent, the adjacent parking lot for, for access and egress to their, to their area.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I'm not suggesting a change in the decision or that I would vote negatively on it. I just wanted to make sure that in making this decision, we do understand that those, that area was originally to be used for parking. And in fact, apparently was used for parking until recent years.
Which is exactly why the petitioner needs, needs the consent of the Select Board.
Exactly, exactly. So as far as the wording of the decision, I saw something that might just be a, almost like a typo in the second paragraph on the first page. In the fifth line, where there's a number, a number two. This is a list of what the relief that the petitioner is seeking. And number two says, "A special amendment to Major Project Site Plan Special," excuse me, "Major Project Site Plan Review Special Permit." I think the word "special" was a mistake, don't you think, Lee? Why would it say "a special amendment"?
Where are, where are you, Jean? I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time here.
I'm on the first, first page, second paragraph, sixth line, right after the numeral two.
It's a special permit to a major project site plan review special permit number 2006-04, section 4.2? Is that what you're asking me?
Yes. Why does it have the word "special" before the word "amendment"? The other, I numbered one, I numbered three.
Maybe the word "permit" is, is supposed to be between the word "special" and the word "amendment", a special permit amendment.
Yes, yeah, so that's, that's, that's where, there should be a word, permit should be in there.
Okay, that's what it is. That's, okay. Okay.
Okay, so we'll make that change.
But when we, when we text our vote, we can say we approve it, subject to, I mean, the change discussed.
Have you all seen the redlined version where there were changes to make reference to the, to the plan?
I've seen it.
To the easement area? Okay. So, go ahead, Lee.
I just want to clarify that the approval that he's from the Selectman is, is because he's implementing, implementing something in the license area. So he's gonna, there's gonna need to be a letter from, between his, between the property owner and the Selectman acknowledging the fact that this, that there's a change happening in an easement area that's controlled by the Select Board. And also that this permit is basically granting him seasonal usage of the outdoor seating. I think he had requested to have it year-round, but this permit only allows it to be done seasonally.
Which I believe by our bylaw means April 1st to October 31st.
That's correct.
Yes.
Didn't we say November though? Wait a minute. I thought I read November, but maybe I'm wrong.
Ivan, were you looking for a permit for those dates?
Ideally, we were looking for permitting year-round, weather permitting. Obviously, there's not a lot, much going on in, in January, February, stuff like that. But we've had some folks that would like to have some parties in the back, and we have the heaters and stuff, so they would have liked to have something there. You know, so that's, that's what we were kind of looking for, if we were able to be year-round, if possible.
I don't have the application in front of me.
I did find it. It, it says in section 3.1, April 1st through November 30th. So it's not October 30th, it's November 30th. And perhaps they're trying to avoid the seasons of the year where snow needs to be plowed. I do, that would seem to be-
I think, I think that was the intent, so.
Ivan, is that, is that correct with you? Is, Jean, can you state those days again, please?
Yeah, April, April 1st through November 30th.
So Ivan, were you looking to weather permitting, have outdoor space usable in December, January, February, or March, in those four months, or no?
His application requested year-round, just to be clear on what his request was.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, that's what we were looking for. We do understand that it goes by the season from April 1st to November 30th, which is fine. But again, we would like to have the opportunity and the ability to, you know, we have a crazy nice day in December and say, hey, we, we're serving on patio tonight, come on over. Same thing for other days. Obviously, we wouldn't do anything of that with snow on the ground and ice and, or current conditions. But just having that availability does save, you know, sometimes the day.
Lee, what does our, what does our bylaw allow us to, to do with regard to the month?
Your, your, your bylaw creates a season. It's through an as-of-right process, but you have the discretion to extend it beyond what the as-of-right timeline is. So you have, you have, you have the right to extend it beyond what is defined in the bylaw as the season.
In this special permit?
In this special permit, yes. So you, if you want to extend it, you have the discretion to do that.
I say let's do it. That's what's been requested.
Jean?
I, I tend to, maybe because I'm Irish, I tend to think of this spring beginning March 15th, you know, so as to include St. Patrick's Day. I was thinking it should at least be March 15th, because that's when spring starts, you know. But if we did say year-round, of course, and it was a concern with regard to snow plowing, it would be up to the Select Board to limit it within that framework.
Yeah, I think that, I think that if, you know, if DPW sends a notice to a restaurateur of, you know, an impending snowstorm on a Thursday or Friday, they send that release on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, Ivan, that would probably give you enough notice to clear out the parking and, you know, the seating in the back to be prepared for the adverse weather. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And as far as any plowing, there's none pretty much behind there. Like, we do our own stuff, we, we take it out, so no, nobody goes there.
Yeah, Lee, what, why, why do you say it would be up to the Select Board and not up to us? Where this is, where this is private property and-
This is private property-
I mean Jean.
Why do I say it?
Well, you just said it would be subject to the Select Board approval.
Yes, because the Select Board holds an easement over that property for public parking. And so if, and, you know, for, you know, presumably, you know, it may be that they would push snow into there for the sake of the parking lot. And so we could, we could say year-round is fine, but we already said you're going to need permission of the Select Board to actually do this. And the Select Board can set whatever limits they want.
And we have that in the conditions.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that the timeframe works for Ivan.
So if it's year-round, that, that would be our preferred course of action. If you guys can approve that, that would be tremendous for us. You know, we obviously wouldn't operate under extreme weather, rain, thunder, whatever, or extreme cold. It's pretty much kind of like a, an option that we have in our back burner if we needed it during those off-season days.
I'm with me.
I'm happy, I support that.
What's a suggestion, to just change the dates? Change November 30 to March 31? And just leave it at that? Lee, are you okay with that?
Sure, I, so that, yes, so that it runs for a full year, April-
In section 1.1, the petitioner asks for year-round outdoor dining. And I suppose that phrase, "year-round," is all that's needed.
Right, and then I'll just change it so that we approve year-round dining in paragraph 3.1.
I support that.
Yeah. If that's what people want. I mean, to me, the, you know, late November, early spring is reasonable. But if people want to go along with the year-round.
That was the purpose, that was the purpose of our bylaw change. And it's what the applicant's looking for. And it's through a special, a special permit process. I say, go, good luck, and Godspeed, man.
So the bylaw provides for April 1 to November 30?
No, the bylaw provides for April through October.
That's what I thought. So the bylaw provides April 1 to October 31, but, but that can be extended by the permit granting authority, which is either us or the Select Board, depending upon where it is.
And this is not a by right ask, this is a special permit application.
That's correct, that's correct. So is there any further discussion? I think we, well, that's in the decision, we haven't gotten to the decision yet, but, but I think at this point, all, all, all that I need is a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to close the hearing. I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, it's unanimous, the, the hearing is closed. Ivan, thank you. The next item on our agenda is to take up the decision. So if you want to hang out and stay where you are, that will be fine while we discuss the decision.
Should I keep Ivan as a part of a panelist or move him to attendee?
He can, he can stay as a panelist for this, because it's his decision. And then we'll move him after, after we vote on his decision. So I guess the first, the first order of business is to vote on, on the decision itself. So if I may have a motion for the vote, what we're voting is on page three, I believe. I need a motion for someone to make the motion for the, what we're granting.
Okay, I move that we grant an amendment to a major site plans review special permit issued by the Planning Board on December 5th, 2006, amended January 16th, 2007, March 6th, 2007, and transferred on April 11th, 2006, and further amended on June 4th, 2019, under section 7.4 of the Needham Zoning Bylaw, and special permit 2006-4, comma, section 4.2. And that we grant this relief in accordance with the decision that is before us with, with two changes. One is to add the word "permit" in the sixth line of the second paragraph after "to." So it would be "to," a special permit amendment. And the other change is in section, is in the conditions and limitations, section 3.1, where would be, that these words would be deleted from April 1 through November 30th of each year. And instead, it would just say, "approved for use year-round." Is that, is there any word that needs to be added to that, Lee?
No, I think that's fine.
Seconded.
Within the easement areas, it says, so that's the motion.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Wait for Adam to come back, thank you. Hearing no discussion, we'll take the vote. So it's basically that, that motion and since the motion references the decision, we'll make it one, one vote on, on the relief requested and the decision as amended, as Jean just, just elucidated, I believe is the word. Jean McKnight? This is the vote.
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Marty Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ivan, congratulations, thank you, good to see you.
Thank you very much, y'all. This is huge for us and for others to come as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Best of luck, Ivan.
Okay. Can I just raise something quickly that had no impact on what we just voted? And I don't think it'll have any impact on the town's request either, but I just want to ask a question. In reviewing these easements, there's, one of the easements is from the town to Simon Two Associates Limited Partnership. It's the one that was recorded at book 13679, page 226. If you have that in front of you, in the fourth paragraph, it says, "The buildings known as 970-986 Great Plain Avenue Needham are located on the lot of land on said plan and, and titled, now or formerly, Simon Two Associates Limited Partnership, map 47, lot 63, deed book 8216, page 572." That paragraph has me totally befuddled. It, it says, it's referring to a lot of land on said plan. And the only plan previously mentioned in this easement deed is a plan marked A and appended to this easement deed. But that's not the plan they're talking about. So I don't understand that fourth paragraph. Did anybody else get confused by that, Jean?
Yes, I dug down into earlier emails and found that Lee had sent us a set of plans, as I printed it out, it turned out to be four plans. And it was Plan of Land in Chestnut Street in Town of Needham, Massachusetts. And those were different plans from the one that was sent as attachments to the easement documents.
Right, and neither one of them, neither one of them was the same as the plan marked A. And neither one of them is marked with the deed book 8216, page 572.
That's right. The, the plan that we have is book 13679 and page 228.
So now, I'm looking, I'm looking at a plan that does have an easement. It's labeled "Easement F." Let me see if the-
Yes, and above it, above, on the other side of Chestnut Road, do you see easement B?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay, right, right. So we have easement F. It's now or formerly of, of Simon Up Associates. And at easement B, it says now, now or formerly of Simon B Associates, map 47, lot 60, well, it's a different lot, it's lot 63. Yeah, that's lot 63, that's, that's easement B. Because easement, easement F is lot 62.
But that plan didn't-
Deed book 521, uh, five, uh, book 8216, page, page 572. And this is a plan that was recorded at the registry, plan number 517 of 1999.
Right? So that is the plan. To me, that's the plan that should be referred to in paragraph four, but it's not. I agree that that seems to fit the description, but it's not what's referred to in the easement deed.
Well, there is a-
Is there a different plan?
There is a reference to a plan in the second paragraph. Permanent easement to use the driveways and motor vehicle passageways within the Center Street Municipal Parking Lot is shown on a plan attached here to marked A and entitled Reconstruction of Chestnut Street, although I don't see that title on this plan. It's a reconstruction of Chestnut Street Municipal Parking Lot in Needham, Massachusetts, Norfolk County Construction Plan, January 15, 1999.
Right, that is, that's appended to this easement deed.
Yes, and it is marked A.
And that's the plan that's referred to in paragraph four. It says, "located on the lot of land on said plan."
Correct.
But then it says, "and entitled," and has some quotes. Those quotes don't appear, what's in those quotes don't appear anywhere on that plan. They appear on the, the earlier plan, entitled Plan of Land Chestnut Street, which is not recorded with this easement deed. entitled Plan of Land Chestnut Street, which is not recorded with this easement deed. So there's a problem with that fourth paragraph. And, you know, again, I don't think it has anything to do with what we're doing here tonight, but somebody should look into that and, and correct it. It's just an incorrect reference. And maybe Chris Heap could do that, or somebody should do that. That paragraph refers to something that isn't there. Unless there was a different plan, Lee, that is just not part of this packet.
Well, no, it says, it says said plan, referring, it is referring to the plan that's attached to, to the easement deed in mark A.
Marty, if we marked this A, if, if Chris Heap literally marked this as A, does that satisfy the, does that resolve the conflict?
It's, it's, it's what's been recorded, Adam. At the registry.
But we need, I know that I was, I was kidding, but I, but we do need that to reference that other plan. Yeah, it said, it said, it should say, "The buildings known as 970 to 986 Great Plain Avenue are located on the lot of land on said plan and are also located on the plan filed as 517 of 99, plan book 467, entitled," and then it continues. That would work. But this as written does not work. Right.
So, Marty, are you saying the reference to a plan that's in our decision as in exhibit three is incorrect?
Exhibit three? Wait a minute, what do you mean by exhibit?
Yeah, exhibit, it's listed. We have a list of exhibits on page two of our decision. And exhibit three is a, is a reference of, to a plan, and it is the Plan of Land Chestnut Street, plan number 517 of 1999. So that is a reference to a plan that does exist, and there's nothing really wrong with that reference.
Marty is pointing out, was, what Marty is pointing out is a defect in the easement deed.
Correct.
That's all.
That's all.
I don't think, I don't think there's anything wrong with our decision, because that plan is, is an exhibit that was submitted to us with the app as, as part of the package on which we made our decision.
No, I just think...
At least that plan was readable. The other ones, I could not read.
You know, separate and apart from what we're doing here tonight, I just think somebody needs to correct that reference with a...
Yeah, I just...
Scrivener's error affidavit or something like that.
I just ran through the list of attendees, and I do not see Christopher Heap as being an attendee here tonight, so Lee, if we could ask you to contact Chris Heap in the morning or sometime in the next few days and just point out to him the, the defect in the deed.
I'll follow up with Chris.
Yeah, suggest to him that he, he do an affidavit or a scrivener's error. It's a, it's a pretty common conveyancing correction method. And he can call me if he's got any questions about it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, can we move on to our next agenda item? So our next agenda item is the decision to amend an amendment to major project site plan special permit number 98-6 to Town of Needham, 1471 Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts, petitioner for the property. It says located at, I'm going to say known as existing parking, existing municipal parking lot on Chestnut and Lincoln Streets, Needham, Massachusetts. This is a decision with regard to a hearing that we had last time on January 18th. We closed the hearing, but I don't think we took a vote. And we have a draft decision in our packet. Marty had suggested a change, but I think you're, Marty, are you withdrawing that suggested change that you would?
I, well, I am. For, for those who don't know what I suggested, I suggested adding some language at 1.6 and 2.2 to make it clear that we're talking about areas within the easements, but Lee has provided me with the wording of, I guess it was October 21, Warren article that passed, which I think limits the, the possibilities for where these areas can be, basically to areas contiguous or adjacent to the buildings. So I'm, I'm satisfied that my additional language, which was trying to add clarity, is probably not necessary. So yes, I would withdraw those changes. I did have another change. At, at 1.5, Lee, does your, can you just read for me the first line of 1.5 as now written?
Uh, yes, just, can you hear me? I can't tell mine.
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, fine. Through several easements as described in exhibits four and six, the town was granted...
I just wanted to make sure it was four and six, not three to seven. Okay, good. Yeah, other than that, I'm fine.
Okay, so the decision that's in front of us, yes, Jean?
I see in section 1.6, there were some additional words added, the redline words. Are those the words you're saying aren't needed, Marty?
That's right. After municipal parking lot, the words that were added, I now think that they're not necessary. And the same language is added.
Right, so it would just go, provided, it would just go down from municipal parking lot to provided that?
That's right. And the same at 2.2.
And so Jean, I think the changes that are shown under paragraph 1.2 stay in, and the changes that are shown in paragraph 1.5 stay in.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, we got that? Everyone clear? Okay, good. So any further discussion on the decision is drafted with those? The decision is originally presented to us with the two changes to sections 1.2 and 1.5. So I need a motion on granting the relief requested?
So moved. Do you want something more?
No. The relief requested as written in the decision
Right.
is the motion that's in front of us.
I'm happy to read it for the record if you want.
No, we need to contact Bruce Eisenhut and let him know that he's been, that when he read all those, all those motions, all those years granting relief, he could have, he could have just referenced the language in the decision.
Yeah, okay.
I believe I heard a second. So is there any further discussion on the motion to grant the relief requested as presented in the decision? Seeing none, we'll take the roll. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Marty Jacobs?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes five to nothing. And now I need a motion to accept the decision with those, with those two changes.
So moved.
I'm moved.
I'll take the two so moves as a so moved in a second.
I, I will second, just to be clear.
Okay. Adam, Adam, Adam made the motion and Marty seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands raised, we'll take the roll. Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Martin Jacobs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous, five to nothing. Decision has been approved. So the next item on the agenda, discussion of proposed change to major project site plan special permit 2021-01, 100 to 110 West Street. So I have to find my email from Alex with the list of participants, which I have got, so Alex, if you would bring, bring over the people who are here for this discussion, I will introduce them once they're all into the, into the participant category.
Evans, this is Alex. I don't see Brandon Nelson, so if you could let me know if he's under a different name or not coming, that would be great.
Is there anyone else here? I will, I will introduce those who I see on my screen. I have, I have attorney Evans Huber, the attorney for the applicant or the petitioner. And I have Michelle Hobbs, Elisa Livingston, Douglas Mance, or Doug Mance, Mike Bennett, Michael Schoenbrun, Gabrielle Lerner, and Christopher Yetman. I don't think I missed anybody. Is that everybody that you see? Alex to bring over?
Yes.
Okay.
Except for Brandon Nelson.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Chris, do you know, is Brandon planning to attend?
I'm not sure, Evans, but I, I believe that we could most likely get started. I'll check in with him.
Yeah, we, we can certainly get started without him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Attorney Huber, you have a floor.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody again.
Good to see you.
So we have a, a good team here. I'm here on behalf of Welltower, which is the owner of the property at 100-110 West Street. I'm sure you remember all the work that we collectively went through to amend the zoning bylaw to create the Avery Square overlay district, and then grant the special permit with LCB Senior Living as the operator. Welltower and LCB have parted ways, as I indicated to you in my cover letter. And Welltower will be partnering with a new operator, Balfour Senior Living. Mr. Schoenbrun is here on behalf of Balfour Senior Living and is looking forward to introducing himself and bow forward to you so that you can get to know something about Balfour. Welltower is also bringing on HYM Investment. Some of the gentlemen here are from HYM as the, as the development manager. Balfour is here tonight. As, as you know, from, in some cases from my discussions with you, and in some cases from, from the cover letter that I sent, the major change that Balfour and Welltower are proposing is a change from two, three programs currently approved, which is independent living, assisted living, and memory care to two, assisted living and memory care. And Mr. Schoenbrun would, would welcome the opportunity to discuss the reasons for that proposed change with you. There's also some changes that we are contemplating to the facade, or, you know, what you will see from the outside, but they are not what I would call major, although we certainly, you know, will be seeking yours as well as the DRB's input on those proposed changes. A lot of things though will not be changing. The footprint of the building obviously will not be changing. The footprint of the fourth floor will be changing slightly, but it will be within the previously approved envelope. It's only changing a little bit on the side facing the parking lot. Nothing that you see from Highland Avenue or West Street will change. And the team of professionals and consultants is also remaining the same. TA T is the architectural team, Kelly Engineering, Hawk Design, McMahon as the traffic engineers, and my firm as legal counsel. So you, you've already, I'm sorry, am I getting some feedback?
You did for a second, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure why. In any event, so we'd like to make a presentation to you. And so with that, I will turn it over to the next member of our team, which I believe is Doug.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, members of the planning board. Michelle, if you want, if you want to pull up the presentation, that'd be great. So again, good evening, everyone. My name is Doug Mans. I'm chief investment officer and partner with the HYM Investment Group. We are a Boston-based developer that has extensive experience, particularly on infill, infill-type development projects in the Boston area. I'll give a little overview of that as well, too. But Evans gave a really great overview and introduction, so I'm just going to quickly introduce a couple of members of the team, and then I'm going to turn it over to Michael Schoenbrun with Balfour for more detailed download of Welltower, Balfour, and their brand. So maybe we can go to the next slide? Evans already went through this, but again, the owner of the project is still Welltower. That has not changed. The main changes are that Balfour Senior Living has been brought in as the operator, and we've been brought on to be the local boots on the ground as development manager. As Evans pointed out, the rest of the team you're probably very familiar with and has not changed, so that's good news, I think, all around, just for consistency. However, we have added one new consultant, which is New Ecology. They will be the sustainability consultant. Sustainability is a very important element of Welltower and the Balfour brand, and so they brought on New Ecology to really push forward those initiatives, part of which will be pursuing lead gold for this building as well, and we can talk more about that later as we go forward, but there is one new member of the team, which is New Ecology. We go to the next slide? Excellent. So one thing I think is important to point out that Welltower and Balfour and HYM are currently already working together on projects. We actually are working collectively on the Balfour Brookline project that's at the former Newbury College site. And, you know, a very 160-unit, but a really great project, and this project literally just broke ground in the last couple of weeks. And so we went through the permitting, design, and approvals of this, and now we are actually underway under construction of 160-unit senior housing facility, which Michael will go through in a little bit more detail as well. Go to the next slide? And I'm just going to keep this brief, because we want to get, you know, to the key items, what we're here for. But just a little overview of HYM. We are a Boston-based, you know, developer. We basically focus on infill or more complicated sites, so we do have a lot of experience in tight sites like this where we have a, you know, a very tight footprint, and also we've done a number of projects next to MBTA right-of-ways as well, too. So just more, again, you can think of us as really as the boots on the ground, the local developer that brings the expertise to it. And we do pride ourselves on establishing really great working relationships with the community, both at the staff level as well as with our abutters. And so we're really excited to be working with Welltower and Balfour on the project. And that just gives you a quick listing of some of the other projects that we've worked on, including a number of senior housing projects. But maybe we'll go to the next slide? So I'm going to turn it over to Michael Schoenbrun, who is the, the CEO and founder of Balfour. Michael and Balfour have been doing many projects with Welltower, but I'll turn it over to Michael to really explain the Welltower as well as the Balfour relationship, and also to talk about the Balfour brand. But I really appreciate your time tonight, and I'll turn it over to Michael.
Michael, are you able to access the link here?
The link here? We may be on mute.
Did see him on. Our apologies.
Do I did too?
What's what's the name of the person you're looking for?
Michael Schonbrun.
He I. Oh, yeah, I remember bringing him over.
Yes.
No, I I think I see.
Let me try again.
He was on before. He seems to have disappeared.
Yeah. We had a smooth start. Our apologies.
So do you want to give a quick overview of um of Welltower and I can hop in and. Speak to. Oh, there he is.
Okay, can you can you see me or at least hear me?
Yes.
Both. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm terribly sorry. Technology is not my strong point. As I guess has been proven, but. We're delighted to be here today. Because Welltower. Senior Management had commitments this evening. I'm going to introduce them a little and then talk about. Balfour and the project and of course be available for. Questions as we go through this. To begin with. Welltower, which is a. A major real estate investment trust that specializes in senior housing. Has been a equity partner with Balfour for about four years now. Together, we have. Seven communities in operation. Two in construction. And two more in development. Of which three are in the Massachusetts area, including the Brookline. Project. Welltower is a long-term holder. They are a partner with most of their operating companies. Important to make that distinction since they're not just the landlord. But they're very much our partner as they are with the other. Companies that they work with. They're very committed to sustainability. And as you'll hear more. This project will be a gold lead certified building. Which is consistent with our Brookline project and with Balfour. It is also a company very committed to diversity. With more than a majority of their senior management positions. And members of their boards of their board of directors. Either women or people of of color. So very committed to support the communities that they operate in. With regard to Balfour Senior Living. It's a company that's approximately. Twenty-two years old. And it came about because of my own personal experience with. My mother, who was rather unexpectedly widowed. When my father died in his mid-sixties. I should say that if you you can't see me, I guess. But if you hear my New York accent. I want to assure everyone that I grew up as a National League Dodger and Mets fan, never a Yankees fan. And I think I should get that on the record early in our conversation. The. Experience.
In the right direction, Michael.
Thank you. The experience that I had finding a place for my mother, Madeline. Really led me to start the 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 business, the company from scratch. After a career in healthcare. First ten years or so, working for governors in Ohio and in Colorado and. I had the opportunity to work with a number of staff members, governors of Governor Dukakis at the time. From there, I went over and spent. Ten years as the chief executive officer of National Jewish Hospital. And then also a year or two working elsewhere in the healthcare field of Blue Cross. And then for the last twenty years have been involved in growing Balfour to its current size. We've we've had very ambitious, on the one hand, but modest goals on the other. We've never wanted to be the biggest senior housing company. We simply wanted to be the best. And that meant the best buildings, the best design. Very importantly, the best staff. The the reality is that folks that. Find this work rewarding are few and far between, so our efforts in looking for those. Individuals is always paramount for us. So in twenty years, they have essentially ten buildings. Is really, you know, not the typical. Speed because we really want to do everything well. The design and you'll see some photos in a few. A few seconds are ones that accentuate. The local environment where we are. We pay a lot of attention to natural light as well as artificial light. High ceilings, colorful interiors are very important to us. A beige is something of a dirty word. We think that bright colors are cheering. And vibrant and make people's mood lift up. And we we pay special attention to that. And we look for great architects and we're delighted we're working with T A T here. We move to the next slide. Those of you, and I guess all of you, were involved with the. Previous design, the LCB design. That had three programs, independent living, assisted and memory. We've made a decision for reasons I'll mention now in a minute to go to two programs. Assisted living and memory care, the same unit count. And in our plan as the earlier one, but we think it's a far more efficient design. Because we're working within the constraints of the building envelope. That. We're inheriting the. Existing community and the places there. We think we have more room now for our residents. In in not having a third program that tends to squeeze out. The adequate space for the common areas that are so important for this socialization that happens in communities like this. We think. Eliminating the independent living and having the assisted and memory care allows for. Is better for the residents. It allows them in an assisted living community to age in place. That's important because at the age that most of our residents come in. Their needs are going to change over time and probably increase. And this assisted living licensure allows them to do that without moving again from an independent living to assisted. Even though our unit size are very much comparable to what you find in assisted living. We also think it's better for couples. It's not uncommon to find the spouse of one in better condition than the other. And that this allows them to stay together really through the rest of their lives. Unless, of course, they need memory care and they become elopement risks. So we're very. And we've we've developed programs that are primarily assisted living and memory care and found that the folks are much happier. It also avoids what happens in I L A L buildings, which is sometimes a stigma. That when somebody has to move from independent living because they need more care. They can be, one, can be depressing for their resident. Two, they can sometimes be ostracized by their former neighbors. And here, everybody is really in the same community and the same program as everyone else. So we think that's a far better outcome. The next slide, please, about the industry experience I've mentioned already. That Balfour is a twenty-two-year-old company. And that, you know, I have to date myself more than forty years. In the healthcare world, both the regulatory, early on. Hospital and insurance later. And then twenty-two years in. The in Balfour itself. Very committed to sustainability. You've heard about that. This will be a lead gold certified, not just certifiable, but certified. Building when we're done. And we're also very committed to being a good neighbor, engaging in the. Community at large, working certainly with the local senior center, opening up. Common spaces for recitals of the local children's. Piano and clarinet lessons, opening things up for Halloween and trick or treating. And on occasion, when we have an exciting live entertainment. Offering, opening that up for our neighbors as well. We think that's a really important aspect. Moving then to the Brookline project. As mentioned by Mr. Mans a few minutes ago. This is now under construction. It received ninety-seven percent approval when we went to Brookline Town Meeting. We also will have lead gold there. And as you see there, a range of programs. That include assisted living and memory care as well as independent. Important to note, and you'll see in the upper photo. We're also renovating and refurbishing a very beautiful mansion on the site known as the Mitten House. And the project that we've worked on in Denver. Called the, sorry, the the Mitten House. And a project in Denver called Moffett Depot, where we don't have a photo, we've also renovated, so we're very accustomed. To dealing with buildings of importance in the. In the community and bring new life into them. The next photo of the Littleton Project in Colorado. As you see, the saddles on the wall, the high ceilings. This is an equestrian area in Colorado. So honoring that by having. Wall specially created. Works that have snaffle bits and reins and the rest. Make folks in that community feel like it's truly part of the community and is a totally new building. We're very committed to that. The next slide of the Longmont property, which is in an agricultural area. We have many of the devices used and by local farmers. And also a display acknowledging the area, at least of Boulder, as an important center for rock and roll. With the. Number of mountain studios there. Switching to the amenity slide. I think what really needs to be emphasized is that Balfour has twenty-four-hour nurse coverage. In all of its buildings, and that will certainly be the case here. Why is that important? It's because if there isn't a in an incident. Sometimes, more often than not, just having a nurse on the premises, not on call, not half an hour away. But in the building allows for local treatment, local triage to be done, which avoids having ambulances and fire. Department vehicles coming in and disturbing the neighborhood, so we're very much in support of having those R Ns. Of course, there are instances where somebody seriously is ill, and then we do have that, but. It was a subject that came up frequently in Brookline, and we were able to demonstrate based on our history and our other nine properties. That at most that that was an occurrence that happened. Once or twice a month, we expect the same. We have a very commit great commitment to fitness and you'll see salt water pool. Salt water is obviously much better than chlorine for skin, especially the skin of our residents. We have a very robust transportation program that's not only non-polluting, but will take our residents to. Doctor's appointments, visit family members. All included without extra charge, as long as it's within a range. We also think that's a benefit to the community at large. Because getting eighty and ninety-year-olds off the road, especially if they've been out to dinner and have had perhaps a bottle of wine. You know, benefits everybody. And then, as you see here, a whole range of services, a great emphasis on dining and entertainment. The. I I think at this point, knowing we have limited time, I'm going to introduce Mike Burnett. Who's the managing partner of the T A T Architectural Firm who we're working with. Mike, take it from here, please.
Mike, you're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you. Very happy to be before you once again, as we hope you remember, we at T A T have been involved with this development for some time. And having worked with you all through the approvals obtained by the the prior developer. Given all the work with the planning board and the D R B in that process, we're very pleased that those efforts helped form a development that the board and D R B were comfortable with in granting its approvals. We're now very pleased to be working, continuing to work on development with Balfour and H Y M in this new iteration. Frankly, given well how well-aligned the Balfour brand actually is to the quality and character of Needham itself. They're here very simply because of this town's own cachet. And that way, again, we're hoping to have help hopefully make this an easy discussion. You've heard with Mike, heard from Michael about their approach and their high quality of resident care. As the as you look at the relatively minor building changes that we're about to show you. These were really brought about by the programmatic changes being proposed within the building and how those enhance resident care. So while those amenity areas and within the building have been significantly upgraded. Very little has been done in terms of modifying building facades and the developments effect on the public realm. This new development team clearly understands all the efforts that were put forth by the town in granting those prior approvals. And we're proposing a plan here that is very respectful of all those prior considerations. My colleague, Michelle, who is instrumental in working with this board and the D R B through the initial process, will take you through some of those changes.
Thanks, Mike. I'm Michelle Hobbs with the architectural team. Thanks to see everyone again. So we set our presentation up in a kind of approved and then proposed format. As Mike outlined, the the changes are really based on some program shifts and. Are, you know, we truly believe that it's all better for the residents and it really is having minimal impact on the building from the public realm standpoint. So from a talking point standpoint, you know, we're going to kind of run through the first floor and then the fourth floor, and then we have some elevations and then the three-dimensional views, so. You should be pretty familiar with this presentation. It's very similar to the one we gave prior. A couple of things to note, talking through the first floor. The previous approved parking, we were carrying one hundred and forty-nine spaces. So this is the previously approved floor plan, and then here is our proposed. So you can see there's been some shifts with amenity space, you know, the the main entry sequence has shifted from the portico share to the portico. Within the interior of the site. You can see there's a note for ongoing coordination with the landscape, the memory care courtyard, which I'll discuss on the three D views. And really just, you know, we've taken some space from the interior garage and. One item we wanted to cover was that we are actually with the change from the aisle to A L per the Needham bylaws. We're only required one hundred and twenty-five parking spaces, but we're actually going to be maintaining one hundred and forty-five. I know that was an area we had talked about extensively previously, so we wanted to make sure to point that out. Just as a general overview, the memory care has been maintained in this wing of the building. It's very similar to the previous program you had seen, the only shift really being where that courtyard location is occurring. We've really tried to focus our amenity space, drawing light into the building, really trying to kind of improve that quality, as was outlined by Michael in terms of Balfour. You know, the the patios, again, were another item we had discussed along Highland Ave. With some of these amenity changes, we've actually removed a few of those patios, but they have remained. For the most part, I'd say probably seventy-five percent of them are as was designed previously. Moving into the kind of upper floors, here was the approved second floor plan, and then here is the proposed. You can see we're just simply moving some program around, really trying to open up that space below, getting that natural light in. Really trying to improve that quality of life and circulation and movement throughout the space. Moving to the third floor, here was the approved and then the proposed. Again, just some shifting of amenity spaces. I think everything that Michael outlined for the Balfour product is kind of spot on in terms of. for the Balfour product is kind of spot on in terms of the units, really how they interact. The only other item to note here is that the commercial kitchen did move from the second floor to the third floor, but I know that we had discussed that previously and it was on the interior of the site. You know, we're venting everything through the roof and maintaining that.
Michelle, you seem to have three colors of blue on, on the plans. Can you explain?
Yes. Yeah, the three colors just pertain to the unit mix. So the lightest blue is a studio, the kind of mid-blue is a one bed or a one bed plus ten, and the darker blue is a two bedroom.
Okay, so it's the size and the number of bedrooms. It's not the mix of what is memory and what is assisted living?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, the, the memory care is maintained on the first level as was for the previous design.
Is there any assisted living on the first level or is the first level completely memory care?
Here, let me jump back so I can show you. So the, the right side wing is the memory care. There are, I think we have nine units of assisted living on the first floor.
Okay. And second, third, and fourth floors are all assisted living?
Correct. Yes.
How many assisted living units and how many memory care units do you have?
So it's maintained at the twenty-eight memory care units. So that brings us to one hundred and twenty-seven assisted living for the total of one hundred and fifty-five, which is what was previously approved.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. So then transitioning to the fourth floor, Evans pointed this out. So there's a couple of things that have changed here, very minimal. I'll actually kind of toggle back and forth to show you. Previously, we were showing, just to kind of refresh everyone, this dotted line that was drawn around the fourth floor addition. That was, you know, where we had kind of worked through the setbacks and where that general massing would fall. We were previously at thirty-two point nine percent of roof coverage. With the current proposal, we're actually jumping that slightly to thirty-five percent. And you can see the main change is just the addition of a unit in this corner. What that actually allowed us to do was remove some of that mechanical equipment that was directly adjacent to residential units and actually contain it within the interior mechanical yard itself. And really just elevate the experience of the units on this level. And again, as has been pointed out, we avoided any changes along Highland Ave, the south of the building for those of Butters, as well as the West Street view. So any changes were on the interior of the site facing the parking area. And then as we transitioned, so moving into the elevations, we really have minimal changes here. The big things I wanted to just talk about were the general massing. So we're maintaining that maximum building height that we had previously spoken about. I think it was forty-nine feet. There have been slight changes on that fourth floor, just of where terraces are located. As Evans pointed out, there is some ongoing coordination items, one of which being the windows, which really translates to that sustainability goal, becoming LEED Gold certified, as well as the entry sequence, you know, the portico being the new entry opposed to the portico share, as well as the, just the final color selection. So we anticipate meeting with the D R B at minimum once prior to our next meeting with you. So we will have feedback from them and plan on going through all the appropriate approvals for any of those edits as needed.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Michelle, could you just go back to that slide for a minute?
Sure.
So just for people who are looking at these elevations, the approved and the proposed for the first time, sometimes the proposed changes don't jump out at you because they are relatively minor. But I think it might be helpful for somebody looking at this for the first time, Michelle, if you could just use your cursor to show where the, where the entry, where the previously approved entry and then the proposed entry.
Sure. So I'll actually, I'll back up real quick for one slide. So this approved east and proposed east elevation, this is the Highland Ave elevation. So you can really see there's not much change here aside from removing one terrace, which was directly adjacent to mechanical space. This was an item that is ongoing with the D R B. We had talked about actually removing this kind of artifact that was left on the building. The approved north and a proposed north, you can see there really are no changes whatsoever between the two. And then the west elevation, which is the interior of the site facing the parking area, facing the MBTA train lines. That's really where you do see some of the changes. So previously, the portico share was acting as the assisted living entry, and the portico itself was acting as independent living. So transitioning to the proposed, the new design is really focused on the portico as the main point of entry. And part of that translates to the, the connection of the memory care to the general circulation. So really trying to maintain that area from an elevancy standpoint and all of that. So you can see the portico has been built out slightly. There are new windows happening based on some of those amenity spaces that have changed and shifted around. And then again, this space at the top that I was discussing, you know, we've kind of infilled that and then been able to move the mechanical space that was previously here into this kind of interior mechanical yard, pulling it away from those units again. And then looking at the south elevation, I actually, I don't believe there's really any changes with this one as well. You can see, you know, the massing has been maintained on this elevation.
I, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry, are you changing any of the mechanical? Obviously, you're probably changing the mechanical systems if you're trying to do LEED Gold, right? So what are the, are there any implications on the, on the roof of the building and on sound?
So we had already, we, we have a Centec as a
Critical consultant?
Yes, yeah. So we haven't gotten into the direct change of that, but prior we were going to be LEED certifiable, so we were already proposing really efficient mechanical systems. So currently, we, we don't foresee changing the approach to the design. There might be a slight change in some of the system, some of the sizing. But from a sound standpoint, we were already calling for sound attenuating panels around all mechanical equipment on the roof itself. We, you know, we will continue to have that conversation with the Centec as we work through that coordination, but I don't anticipate there being much of a change.
Are, are the penthouses remaining or are there new penthouses that you're designing?
In terms of the mechanical penthouses or the, the units themselves?
Mechanical.
So they are ma, they're maintained where they were located. So I actually, I'm just going to jump back quickly. So we had kind of split the mechanical based on where the V R Fs and E R Bs were located. So we kind of, we're tacking elements on to the ends of the bar itself, again, staying within those setbacks. We had this interior mechanical yard, and then again, another one on the kind of second addition off of the penthouse. So we don't anticipate those changing drastically. If anything, it might have to shift a foot or two just based on coordination. But outside of that, I, I don't believe we're planning on proposing additional. If we, you know, as we continue working through this coordination, of course, we'll continue to discuss with the board as well as, you know, the D R B in terms of how that may have any impact on elevations, but I, I don't anticipate it at this current moment.
Thank you.
So then just transitioning into the three D views, again, these were the approved and then proposed. So looking at the aerial view, so this was what was previously submitted and approved. And then here is the proposed. You can see the slight change kind of when you toggle back and forth between that coverage, again, it was thirty-two point nine, so right around thirty-three, just to thirty-five. And then taking us through that, those public realm views, again, our focus has really been on minimizing any impact along any public way, so Highland Ave, West Street, and then the direct of Butters to the south. So this was the approved view along Highland Ave and then the proposed. So you can see there's really no change occurring there from what's visible at that fourth floor. Again, this is the southwest view looking down Highland Ave at the intersection of West Street. Again, the massing really is not changing at all along this way. Here's the view looking north from the direct Butters to the south. So you can see, again, the massing is not shifting whatsoever. And then here's the, the view of the entry. So this is an area that is, as I was saying, ongoing with some coordination. This is the approved and then the proposed. The main item of coordination here is just this memory care courtyard. We are going to be bringing it into the site and actually be removing what we had discussed previously. It was an eight-foot non-climbable fence. And I know that that was a topic we discussed in terms of its proximity, right on the edge of West Street. How can you shield that with landscaping? So currently, you know, we're, we're working with HAWK Design on really looking at how to move this on the interior of the site and what this kind of end courtyard will look like. So you can anticipate seeing that change, you know, in our next submission to the board. Then here's the interior view. So this is approved. And then this is the proposed. And again, this is just an item of continued coordination. You know, we're looking at this entry sequence, what the glazing, you know, looks like, how that interacts with windows, again, reaching that gold, LEED Gold certified standard. That's everything. So be happy to, you know, open it up for discussion with everybody.
Michelle, could you stop sharing so that we could all see one another?
Sure.
Much better. I'm not going to speak quite yet. I'll, I'll open it up to the rest of the board. Adam, I saw that you raised your hand, so I'll start with you.
Thanks, Paul. So first of all, I'd like to commend that, you know, the new team for the design, the redesign and the new program. And clearly, Well Tower and Balfour, you know, have a, an established working relationship and a very successful operation that provides significant benefit to, you know, to your, to your residents. And, you know, I think all of us have gone through, you know, our, you know, our parents dealing with, you know, grandparents dealing with critical life transitions. And I think it's fair to say that we need more facilities, you know, to help our, you know, to help our seniors, you know, during this challenging time. I think you've done a good job aesthetically, and I think your program is a good, robust program for what it is. My essential concern goes back to the, the public good that we arrived and established a couple of years ago when we worked with Evans and Roy to revise the zoning to create the Avery Square Overlay District. And it's, and I, you know, we create, we changed the zoning to allow for a mixed use in this area, specifically including independent living, memory care, and, and assisted living, independent living and memory care. And one of the most critical needs that we have is, is creating more housing and affordable housing for senior living. And obviously, with, with memory care and with assisted living, it's a very different program that requires a very different set of needs and programs to meet those needs. And they are, and I recognize that there is an inherent need. But the, but the municipal interest that we had all been aligned on was also relating to providing independent living for senior residents and affordable. Some units were affordable. And we're not really living up to that program with those municipal goods. I'm not saying you're not providing a municipal good to a degree, and you are meeting a market need. But it's kind of outside of what the spirit and intent was of our original zoning change. And that's not going to be an easy obstacle for me to overcome. I would almost rather see this be more independent living for seniors than to remove it completely. Now, we can't quite do that, I don't think, Lee, because I don't know that in this, I don't recall in that zoning, if we allowed just for se, special senior living. I think it was mixed use is what the zoning change was. Evans, you may remember that because I think you helped draft that, that bylaw. So, so those are, those are my challenges with this proposal. And they're not going to be easy for me to overcome, notwithstanding the, you know, the success and the need that Balfour and Well Tower, you know, deliver. It's just a, it's just a different need. So those are my, I have some other minor comments, but they're really minor in comparison to that driving element. And I just wanted to express my appreciation for your indulging my thoughts.
Anyone else from the board? Yes, Jean?
Yes, I want to agree completely with Adam Locke that, and I'll mention, you know, Natasha Espada and I are the co-chairs of a newly formed committee, the Housing Plan Working Group. And on last Thursday, we had a public education and listening session. Part of that was a presentation I gave on the history of zoning in Needham. And I proudly ended that presentation with our twenty-twenty change to create the Avery Square Overlay District to allow the independent living with the ten percent assisted, excuse me, affordable units. And it was always the intention of both of this zoning and of certainly of the special permit, that that's what would happen here. Now, I'm not saying that the zoning does not allow your change. I think, I think, I think it does, the zoning bylaw. And I'm sure, Evans, you've looked at it before, you'd, you'd consider coming before us and, and would agree with that. But certainly you need the change in the special permit. And, you know, why can you do this in Brookline? Why is it fine in Brookline to have, you know, seventy-eight units that are memory care and assisted living and eighty-seven independent living? And it, no, it won't work in Needham. I, I want to know why. I'm very disappointed at this outcome of our hard work. And I don't think it's the outcome either, you know? We'll just have to wait and see how, how we go with this.
I just wanted to echo what, what Jean and Adam said. I think the affordable housing piece, especially hearing what the community is interested in and us pursuing and pushing for affordable housing and for opportunities for different types of housing. It would be great to see it as part of the project. I don't have much more to add than what they said, but I do agree with their comments.
Marty?
Yeah, I, I'm going to echo what all three previous members have said. This, this kind of surprised me and it's, it's pretty disappointing, actually. Not that your presentation wasn't good. It was good. But doing away with independent living and the affordability component that comes along with it is a real disappointment to us. And my question was going to be the same as Jean's, which is, why does it make sense in Brookline but not here? To have the independent living? That's all.
So I'll throw in the fifth voice to say the same thing. Sounds like we're unanimous on that concern. It's not, having the affordable units is important. It's important to the board. It's important to the town. But also, the increase of the senior, the senior apartment But also, the increase of the senior um, the senior apartment stock for those who are looking to downsize, are looking to uh, sell their homes and move into apartments, capture their equity, and yet stay in Needham, we were very excited to have this project with 78 um, uh, new um, new, new independent apartments for seniors of which um, Jean mentioned 10%, I believe it was 12.5%. So so I think it was nine, nine affordable units. Um, so um, uh, that was a huge selling point at the beginning when we, when we did the zoning change. Um, so I I I think you got five planning board members who are all disappointed that those 78 independent living units, nine of which were affordable housing um, are being lost with this change in your program. And um, uh, I I I was not expecting to see that Brookline had 87 independent living units when I knew that you were coming in to discuss the shift to to all independent, uh, to all assisted living and memory care. Um, I thought it was because that's what you did, but clearly you do do independent living. Balfour does do independent living. Um, I believe you said that you are partnered with um, uh, what is it, Wellfleet?
Wellto- Welltower.
Welltower, that you're partnered with Welltower in Brookline also, so um, you know, I, we don't fully understand why you can't do it in Needham.
Michael?
Uh, yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm not sure the video is working, but let let me make a few points. Um, the first is that the unit sizes uh, and the unit types in the assisted living uh, section of the building um, are far larger than the typical assisted living units. Um, and will be in many ways comparable in square footage, and we can bring to you um, data on that. Uh, in many ways, similar to independent living. The the, they will have full kitchens. Um, and obviously, um, you know, bath uh, rooms with uh, similar amenities to assisted living. Uh, the the the, the point is, some people coming in will have no levels of care and will not have to pay for that. But as their needs change, there will be an ability for them to stay in those units, uh, whether it's they alone, if they're individuals at that point in their life, or as couples. So there really is in what, in many ways, an enhancement. And frankly, since the Brookline project was designed, uh, we've opened a uh, couple of projects now in Colorado, which have only been assisted living and memory. And the reception really has been very strong. People really like this idea that they can, that they can age in place. So I would really urge the board not to get hung up on the labels, but to look at the amenities and the square footage and the rest, uh, that we have that. Um, so I, for us, that was the reason for this um, change. And going forward, at this point, we anticipate we're gonna be doing um, perhaps even exclusively. The future, of course, is a little always hard to predict. But the we, the memory care speaks for itself, right? Folks that, you know, you know, are are elopement risks and have um, needs that whether it's Alzheimer's or another form of dementia, will always have to be taken care of. But the distinction between assisted living and independent living, other than the fact that assisted living is regulated by the state and independent living is not. So there's also a real benefit to having higher quality of care, um, which gets reviewed by the um, the State of Elderly Affairs in Massachusetts, is something that I think also can't be dismissed. And the um, and this, and the 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 issues is the, in the old way, in the old world, assisted living had, you know, maybe a small refrigerator and a microwave. These units will all have refri- full-size refrigerators, dishwashers, um, uh, stoves, um, uh, as well as microwaves. So there there will be a, you know, in that sense, it's absolutely interchangeable. So I would really ask the board not to get hung up on the labels, but rather to look at who's gonna be coming in. Uh, and we think this is um, and frankly, folks that move into senior housing for, with very few exceptions, they just say, it's time for me to go to a retirement community. And the issue of whether it's licensed or not, they will ask about the size of the units, the finishes, the amenities, uh, the common spaces. Uh, and we're saying, and I guess you might even say a paternalistic way, you're gonna be better off in an assisted living licensed building, because you'll be able to stay there all your life and not have to move from independent living. And the folks that come sometimes into independent living and don't wanna move to assisted living, they then end up with round-the-clock nursing care, which is two or three times the expense uh, of uh, of home health nursing assistance. Um, they are um, you know, it costs them far more than what the assisted living community uh, would charge, because we can gang the the staff together and provide that coverage. So happy to describe more detail about the um, the size of the units and and comparing those in many ways to what the previous project was.
Marty, go ahead.
So with respect, here's my reaction to what you just said. First of all, I don't think you'd answered at all why you can do it in Brookline but not in Needham. But secondly, if we're to basically look at independent living and these assisted living units as essentially equivalent and not get hung up on it, then the only real difference is that this frees you from the affordability requirement. What else are you telling us?
I'm I'm telling you that in an assisted living apartment, you won't have to move when your needs increase.
Jean, you wanna answer that? You raised your hand. Did you wanna say?
I did, I did, uh, because I wanna speak from my own experience of um, people uh, from my small church who've lived at North Hill, people who do still live at North Hill, and um, going from their uh, independent living apartment to the assisted living wing. Um, I certainly did not see that for a new woman I knew well as being a terrible thing for her. Um, she had the services she needed, we could still visit her. We even had religious services, Quaker meetings in her common room. Um, and then I think also of my sister-in-law and brother-in-law, who lived in a beautiful community called Collingwood in Maryland. Um, and they lived in the independent living unit for several years. Uh, my brother-in-law had a multiple sclerosis. So when his physical condition deteriorated to the point where he couldn't, his wife couldn't help him up out of bed and so forth, he went and he would go in his wheelchair, his power wheelchair, right up to the assisted living to be helped to bed and showered and everything, and then go back to his unit where his wife was. Um, I don't see the, you know, the idea that you have the two levels of care in one building. I see as a benefit, not a, uh, not a detriment. And I also wanna mention that um, we have also uh, going to be talking about at a subsequent meeting, Wingate is uh, converting their skilled nursing center, skilled nursing facility uh, to independent living. I mean, we're glad to see that, we're glad to see the independent living. But of course, the loss of a very fine skilled nursing facility in our town is is has to be recognized as a loss. But look, they they, I think it's gonna be economical to do that. Um, to have fif- 50 units, I believe is what they're proposing. I just don't understand the reason uh, for this change. I don't see the benefit of it for uh, the elders of Needham at all.
So Evans, if it's okay, I'd like to just, you know, maybe add a few things on for Michael as well, too, if that's okay with the board.
Sure, please do.
Thank you. Um, so again, first, I don't think it was definitely not our our goal to disappoint the board. We definitely know from Evans and from Roy that you guys have spent a lot of time on this. Um, it's obviously a very important location for the town of Needham. Um, and so, you know, we didn't come in lightly with these changes. I do think, because it's an existing building, and it's a very constrained building. Obviously, it's an older building of, you know, it used to be a factory that was converted, you know, to this use. You know, we have, do have lower floor-to-floors, and we have some unusual depths in the building too as well. So the original plan, we started ending up trying to fit all three programs in this building. We were finding some pretty severe inefficiencies for this. Um, and so we felt like we were trying to, you know, jam in three uses that weren't really, really well working for us from a marketing perspective, how they just related to each other. So the physical constraints of the buildings really were part of the reason why we led to this decision to really go with two uses. Um, we have clearly heard from Evans before that the affordable component is really important to this board as well as to the town of Needham, and we're not dismissing that. I think, you know, we're willing to have conversations about that, to think creatively about how we might be able to still achieve the goals of what you guys laid out for this site. I mean, it is our goal to bring, you know, a really, um, you know, high-quality facility to the town of Needham in this location and get this this building back into productive use. Um, so, but definitely there were some physical constraints around it. Um, you know, Brookline is a different project, mostly a ground-up development. We are redoing the mint house, but that's only a portion of it. We also had some better abilities to really spread that project out, um, to have a little bit more, um, I wanna say independence for the independent living, but again, there are some nuances to different projects, but we had some site constraints here, so. Um, but we do appreciate the board's comment, and we're obviously happy to have further discussions about this.
Adam?
I, uh, can people hear me? I don't think I'm.
Yes.
I I recognize, I I'm, I'm understanding a little bit more now about this concept of the physical, the physical constraints of the building. But that and which has driven your change in program. And it's true that you're dealing with an existing building, but that building could be modified. And, you know, this is, there is a pride of place in town for this building, not just for its previous uses, but especially because of the amenities that are ripe to benefit specifically independent living. And I, and and Michael, I don't mean to minimize the distinction between the labels, because I don't think that the distinction is insignificant. I think that there's a senior, you know, there's a senior, uh, the senior center is across the street. There's um, uh, the transfer, you know, a major transportation uh, hub across the street. There are grocery stores for uh, pharmacies and restaurants all in the immediate area. And there's a fantastic open park. It's not a huge park, but uh, but Avery Square is a very pretty open public amenity. And it's a benefit for those that may be in memory care. It's a benefit for those that are in, you know, assisted living. There may need to be a reconfiguration of the model. Perhaps by the number of rooms, it's obviously not our place to determine that. You have to figure out the model that works for you. But I think what you're hearing from the board is you're gonna have a very hard time achieving a special permit grant, which is discretionary, to extend the height of the building and utilize the fourth floor. That's not going to achieve the public, the municipal interests and the public good that motivated the change in our zoning. It's not really a function of, uh, it's not really a function of labels. I recognize that there is a distinction in the care that's provided at the different levels. And yet, our public, our municipal interest is in finding a way to increase the senior, the independent senior living stock in town and the afforded number of affordable units. So it's, so I recognize that, on the one hand, you're talking about a distinction of labels. I recognize that you are physically constrained to a degree by this building. But there is a lot of space in total. We'd be open to, you know, your creativity that delivers the pride of service that you're delivering across the country at your standard of care, which is probably higher than many other facilities that I've seen, that 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 finds a better balance of the needs for the town and the needs for the marketplace.
Yes, Mike?
Mr. Chair, good. I I mean, we, we, it 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 really, I I I just push back a little bit on that if I could, Adam, about the distinction, because I think seniors today more than ever have a very wide variety of needs, desires, what they wanna do. I mean, you're gonna have seniors that wanna live in Modera. You're gonna, they wanna be, and and you're gonna have, uh, you know, I think, you know, these these facilities tend to draw from the community. I think a lot of that draw is kind of also where are your friends going? What is, what is going on with that? Um, I wanna reiterate what uh, Michael had said before is, I'm like, and we've done a slew of senior campuses, including the whole Wingate campus that we designed that whole. So we're familiar with the changes that are coming, as Jean suggested. Um, it's a bit of a different kind of creature, and there are nuances to that. But it would tell you that those differences and nuances in those facilities uh, would attract different needs and desires of different individual seniors. So in in all of those facilities, what what separates Balfour is these are really, the the units themselves are independent living units with, again, full kitchens and the ability to live there without any assistance whatsoever. So the idea that they would be licensed or 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 not, and as as we know, Massachusetts has designated assisted living as a residential use in the Mass General laws, it's a, it it's, you know, it just gets a little gray in terms of, you know, what assisted is, what independent is, and and why would you preclude someone from living? You wouldn't preclude someone from living here if they didn't have the needs, if that's what they wanted to be, and and enjoy all the amenities that, again, are are, you know, they're white-linen amenities in in a Balfour facility.
I think that's absolutely valid. I think, I think as, at another stage, it would be helpful to understand the distinction in the service that you provide. And we brought, and maybe we focus on that. But there is still gonna have to be some ability to accommodate our municipal interest before we're able to get to a point where the board is interested in granting approval for a special permit.
We do hear you loudly and clearly.
Well, if I'm just um, picking up on the theme that Doug Mans and Mike Bennett just said, you know, we arrived at this because we thought three programs with three different dining rooms, three different common spaces, you know, was just not an efficient use of the building, uh, which in distinction with um, Brookline, you know, where, which is being developed ground up. And as mentioned before, before we had the experience in our Longmont project, where people are moving into the assisted living and not needing any care, but benefiting from some of the, what are called IADLs, instrumental activities of daily living, which includes the transportation program, um, and the meal service and the rest, it was significant. Um, so I just wanna indicate that we want to provide a premium experience for our residents, and we seriously doubted we could do that with three distinct programs.
And we seriously doubted we could do that with three distinct programs. And that was, that was the motivation. I mean, if if the feeling of the board is, you know, you need all three, you know, then, you know, that's a challenge for us in the sense of the quality of the program that we, you know, that the Balfour brand represents. If it's an issue of, you know, if there's other things, you know, then that that can be talked about at a later time. But we just, we just didn't see how the two, how three programs could fit in the building. And 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 frankly, as a matter of economics, you know, reducing the number of units, you know, was problematic. And we really wanted to deliver to the seniors of Needham the same quality of building and program that we do everywhere else. And that's the motivation.
I I I appreciate that. I I don't doubt that. And I think, Michael, that's absolutely valid.
Have you given any thought to having the two programs be independent and assisted living? And not memory care?
We think unfortunately, the reality is that, you know, the rate of dementia and Alzheimer's care is only increasing. That unfortunately, the pharmaceutical companies and the great medical scientists are a long way from finding a cure for that. And at a certain age, it's argued, you know, and I've seen a number that fifty percent of people in their eighties have some serious, you know, memory impairment. So I think it's frankly, our feeling is that it's not responsible to avoid the the memory care component.
So I might just add a couple, you know, quick comments again, just to reiterate. Because I do think we're we're getting, you know, caught a little bit on general descriptions. The Balfour assisted living program is much more expansive than other assisted living programs. Again, they have larger units, which really doesn't exist in much of the marketplace, right? They're typically smaller and only meant for, you know, folks that are single. It it does, you know, provide, again, full kitchens, larger units. So anyways, but I think we'd love to continue to have the conversation with you guys about, you know, that this is, you know, a bit of a hybrid assisted living program that does have larger units. I think also we understand clearly the importance of, you know, the affordability. So we're willing to, you know, talk with Evans and think about strategies about how we can meet that, you know, that town goal, which was obviously a critical part of, you know, this program previously, and we can hear that clearly. I also want to emphasize too is if we have couples that move in here, you know, you know, quite a few of them will be still, you know, more on the independent side per se and still taking advantage of those, you know, the senior, you know, the senior center, you know, the shops, et cetera, around this area. And most likely some of the, many of the assisted living folks too as well. So we still think many of this still achieve the goals that Needham set out. But I understand, you know, you know, you guys had this, you know, we're very focused on the independence, you know, the three uses. But again, that definitely is a struggle for us in this building as we went to look through it. And did not bring this back lightly to you guys either, because obviously we knew how important this this site was for you.
I think at this point, you know, the board has made its initial reaction to this proposal very clear. I think probably the next step is for the various members of our team and myself to kind of absorb what you've said and think about how we can respond to the concerns that you've expressed. And so I think that's probably the best next step. We know that you've got a lot on your agenda. And it's already nine o'clock. I know that you've got this other matter coming up. So perhaps the best thing is to not take more of the board's time at the moment. But to thank you for your feedback, that was the purpose of this meeting before we came in and formally applied for an amendment to the special per permit. The purpose of this meeting was to present the basic elements of the proposed change and get your feedback. We've certainly, you've certainly given us your feedback and we would like to take that and see how we can work with it.
So to add to what Evans just said, I do want to thank you for coming in. I think that this was a very productive discussion. I think that that this board learning in this setting, in this informal discussion setting without an application in front of us, for us to have an understanding of what your, what you see your goals to be now was a very important step and a very useful step. And will be a starting off point for for our future discussions. And I think this was a good give and take and a respectful give and take. And both your team and the board have have a lot of things to think about. And so, so we greatly appreciate you coming in and are having this discussion. Thank you.
Great. Well, thanks. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask for a five minute?
Absolutely. I'm gonna change it to ten. We're gonna take a ten minute break. We will, we will reconvene. Yes?
I'm going to recuse myself from the, from the next
That's correct.
Part of the agenda, so I won't be coming back until after it is completed. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll text you.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll reconvene at nine fifteen.
All right.
And I will start the introduction here. We are resuming after taking a short recess. Next item on the agenda is consideration of our decision for the major, major project site plan review petitioner of Needham Enterprises LLC for the property located at sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue regarding the proposal to construct a new childcare facility that would house an existing Needham childcare business and Needham Children's Center. I had previously turned the chair on this project over to Vice Chair Adam Block. And so, Adam, the gavel passed.
And the gavel is received, just like that. So we have a number of, I think, changes, just to kind of go over and clarify. Forgive me in my naivete. We have comments that we've received from from the applicant's attorney. I recall there have been, you know, periods in the past where an applicant's attorney, you know, has participated in discussions about the decisions. Is this a scenario where the applicant would or the applicant's attorney would ordinarily participate in our discussions? What's been the board's past practice?
I'm gonna ask Marty and Jean, who've been on this board a lot longer than I have, possibly respond
Well, I'm not sure I can say any particular practice, but Attorney Evans Huber has had a very much an opportunity to communicate with us. And he has given us communication in writing. So unless based on that writing, we have questions that we want to ask him, I I don't see a reason to have him join us as a participant.
I guess, I guess I think Jean is right. We certainly have asked questions of counsel before about particular wording or items in a proposed decision that we're thinking about. That's, that has happened, certainly. But I think I would want to do it, and I think it would be consistent with past practice such as it is, that if we have particular questions we'd like to ask, I I think it would be okay. I think it'd be appropriate.
Oh, I do too. And I'm kind of remembering various occasions when perhaps Attorney Kramer was participating when we were discussing the final decision of something. So shall we see how it goes and see if we have reason to ask Attorney Huber for more input or have a question for him?
You know, I'm, I'm fine with that. So in my read of Attorney Huber's letter to us is having read an early draft of our decision, they, he intends to appeal the decision primarily on the issue of the setback and on the issue of the barn. And has, I think, reneged on some previous agreements. If, you know, on some other lesser issues.
Excuse me, Adam. Adam.
Yes.
To be fair to Mr. Huber.
Yes.
I think the word reneged is a strong negative connotation word that does not apply here. I think that Mr. Huber's letter states that if he's going to appeal on the issue of the setback and the barn, then these, these other issues are issues that he would be permitted to push back on in front of the court. And he therefore would, would intend to do so. I think as an attorney, he has, he has every right, and in fact, I would expect him to take that position. And so on his behalf, I would like to
Recaracterize. That's fine.
Recaracterize and not use the word reneged.
That, that, that's fair. Nevertheless, there were a number of things that we had previously, I thought, agreed to with the applicant, which I understand from Attorney Huber's letter, he would, you know, he would not continue to agree with unless we, you know, unless we eliminate, you know, reduce the setback to sixty-five feet and preserve the barn. So that may be a, you know, a nicer characterization. And yet, it's the same effect. So the options before us, I think, are A, to proceed with the decision that we, based on our deliberations that we had arrived at previously, correct the decision in our best form tonight and proceed on that basis. The second option, which is advocated by Attorney Huber, is to is to, is to reverse our decision effectively with respect to the barn and the setback. And and then, you know, continue in our otherwise agreed form of the other elements that he raised. And 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 continue with the other changes that we have. And I think Lee is what's the third draft. So those, I think, are the, are the two options. One question is, is there a third option somewhere in the middle? Which is something that we don't know. And Jean will come to you in a second. I think that on this basis for now, we proceed with our decision as effectively it's presently drafted. And, you know, we'll see how the evening moves forward. Paul, before I get to you, Jean had her hand up first.
I just want to, I I recognize that Jean was first. And I just wanted to raise my hand to know that you, I wanted to be next.
So you, okay, so I have you in the second place. I have Jean in first place.
Adam, I want to go back to the framework you set out there. But there's just one thing I want to add about Attorney Huber's response. He sent a follow-up email that came in today in which he raises a new issue. I mean, I think the plans have always shown that there would be a sewer connection. And that would require an extension of the sewer to the site. But now he's asking that the decision give them an option. And that is to install a subsurface sewage disposal system if they prefer to do that. So that is something new that we haven't considered before in 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 the hearings or in the process at all. So, but I I don't want to ignore it.
And we also to that, and we also to that point, Jean, have, as I think Lee has forwarded to us, maybe Alex did, I apologize, from Pat Day with some specific comments and questions that she had, which I'd like to also make sure that we address tonight. Paul, go ahead.
Yes, it was the request about septic system and Pat Day's email that is specifically the reason that I have my hand raised. On the issue of the septic system, I had read previously, and so after I saw Attorney Huber's request that they be allowed to, to have the septic system, I, I went to the computer and and checked it again. I had read that many, many experts believe that a properly maintained septic system is actually better for the environment than hooking up to municipal sewer. So I did have a brief discussion with Lee about this earlier today, which was a discussion about whether it's really the planning board's purview on that or whether that's really an issue for the Board of Health. But I want to say that in my, my position is that if the Board of Health is okay with a private septic system rather than hooking up to the sewer line, given the fact that I'm reading that a properly maintained septic system is actually environmentally better than hooking up to municipal sewer, I would be in favor of, of permitting that change. I also felt that Pat, the issues that were raised in Pat Day's email were reasonable requests. I don't think there were, I I don't think there was anything there that I felt was out of line. I think she, since, since our decision is so specific, as as our decisions always are, so specific to track what has been represented to us are the plans for how an operation is going to be run. She had represented that she would have eighteen employees. We said, okay, you have a maximum of eighteen employees. And now she's saying, well, gee, can you give me a nineteenth? I've got no problem with that, especially since, as she points out, there is one parking space more than our calculations require. She raises, I think, a very good issue about having, basically using the building for her, for, for ancillary purposes outside of Monday through Friday, seven thirty to six. You know, having training sessions with her staff on Saturdays, having some parent get togethers, which is actually something that I had thought of before. I mean, you see that all the time where.
We discussed that. As a planning board, we discussed, and it came up as a function about parking. And I think Paul brought it up in the context.
But we do have a condition that says that the parking will not spill over to the streets.
That's why I put that in.
Right. So if, if they can have those programs and have it be limited to their parking lot. um, that's fine.
The concern that I have with that.
I interject something here. I think we're a, a little bit ahead of ourselves. Okay. And here's why. Um. Pat Day and Needham Children's Center are not the applicant or the petitioner. I think we need to make sure that these comments from Pat Day are adopted by the petitioner. And we have their attorney, Evans Huber. I would like to know whether, in fact, he would adopt these and present these to us on behalf of the petitioner. And then we should discuss them. Right, right now, I think it's premature. We, you know, we're talking about comments from somebody who has no, no real status before us.
Except that our, our decision is conditioned upon Needham Children's Center being the occupant.
Only initially.
True.
Marty's right. So what it would propose is this. Jean, I'll come back to you in a second. Let's continue and resolve the rest of the decision as best as we can. Once we've completed that exercise, only then, uh, I think it's appropriate to bring Evans in to discuss those items that Pat's raised. Um. Uh, in terms of the septic, I, you know, I'd want to make sure that in the, all Evans was suggesting was that he wanted the option to do it. It wasn't something that he was um uh that he was um, you know, committing to. And it, I'd like, as you're saying, that the Department of Health, you know, they're satisfied with that. That's one thing. But I also think we need to make sure that our own engineers are satisfied with it because I think they have two detention basins on the plan for uh, for water. Uh, uh, you know, for water. So I don't know if that's going to require a new engineering plan of where they would locate the septic in relation to the infiltration basins. I know there's at least one, but I think they're putting a second one in closer to the sidewalk for a storm, as part of additional stormwater management. So I would just want to make sure that wherever that is put in, especially given the slope that they're going to create, that's going to spill over to Matt Hydeman's property, that uh, you know, that engineering takes a look at it, and obviously they're satisfied with it too.
Well, I would think that any septic system has to meet the requirements of the Board of Health and our engineering department.
So I would just want to make sure that that condition was, if we're going to create the option, that we're just clear that it needs to have those standard approvals. Jean, did you?
I have.
Ben?
Um, we can get into this when we, when we turn to the Pat Day's comments later, but I don't want to forget that she also asked about changing the time for rubbish disposal. And I think the time limits are put in to protect the neighborhood from the noise. And it's something, having lived across the street from a commercial establishment, that I'm very sensitive to. Um, and we want to be careful to make sure that the time limits are protective of the neighborhood.
I agree.
Well, do, do my colleagues want to rethink the setback issue? As you may recall, at our meeting on uh January fourth, I expressed the view um that, you know, the setback in our bylaw being thirty feet and the applicant providing a setback of sixty feet, um, I thought that was sufficient.
Sixty-five.
And I, I did not agree um that it would be considered reasonable to have, or to require a setback of a hundred and twenty feet. I still feel that way. And um, since that's the key issue here, uh, I wonder if my colleagues wish to discuss that further before we move on.
I uh, I'm open to that. I think that my position had been with, with uh the setback, that the closest analogous use is not the residential building to the south of this property, but rather the synagogue to the north of the property. And then, as that too is similarly protected under the Dover Amendment, that it should, it would line up in a more institutional use and preserve the character of the neighborhood if the setback was the same at two hundred and thirteen feet. However, Paul corrected me in my thinking in saying that perhaps, although that is the case, the synagogue is substantially larger than this daycare. And so the appearance, for instance, from the sidewalk looking at the thing is a very different matter, and I think that that's true. And so that's why I agreed with the previous suggestion to reduce my proposed setback of two hundred and thirteen feet instead to a hundred and thirty-five feet. And I think that that uh, and I, and I thought that that was a reasonable compromise. Because it's true that even at si- at sixty-five feet, it's not in character with our bylaw. And under site plan review, we have that, you know, the question is, do we have that discretion? And we believe that we do have that discretion. And the, the other institutional use is, you know, it's more in keeping with that. So I thought that that was a reasonable compromise. The barn has always been a ruse in the project. That may not be a nice characterization, and yet I don't think that it's a, it's an incorrect characterization too. Uh, and so, you know, it's true, Jean, that if we accept a sixty-five-foot setback, we perhaps could accept the barn, although not necessarily. But I, you know, the, one of the points that Marty raised in our deliberations was a function of the bulk. And you've got one building and a second building that's almost fifty percent of the primary building. And the applicant never pro- pro- uh, uh, proved to us that a daycare typically, customarily, to be precise, has a building, whether for storage or other ancillary purposes, that size. So I don't think that they're really separate. I think that the design of the sixty-foot setback had always been, for some unknown purpose, of preserving the barn. And if it wasn't unknown, perhaps it was unclear, and either way, that clarity changed throughout the process, and we have evidence to that. So at this moment, that's my position on both the setback and the barn. Paul?
I agree with Adam. Um, I especially agree that the size of the building, the bulk of the building, um, which isn't allowed use, um, is something at only sixty-five feet is I don't, I can't think of a more polite word, an eyesore to the neighborhood. And an important part of my thinking is the Design Review Board agrees with us.
Correct.
Um, they raised the question, I believe, at least twice, can't you set it back farther? Um, I think at a hundred and thirty-five feet, that building will be sufficiently set back um to, to, to not, not be too great a detriment to the neighborhood. I would hope it wouldn't be a detriment at all. Um, there were concerns from the Design Review Board, not only by the size and the bulk, but also by the design. And um, that's part of the thinking too, because the petitioner has not been willing to make substantial changes to the design to make it fit into the neighborhood uh, the way the Design Review Board was suggesting that I changed. The setback, I think, alleviates that issue. Um, by just, you know, you just don't see it from the street as you're, as you're driving down Central Avenue or driving up Central Avenue, depending upon whether you're coming or going. Um, so, so I, 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 I really think that the hundred and thirty-five-foot setback i- is important to preserve the, the aesthetics and the character of the neighborhood. I believe that we have the authority to do it. I believe that it is not an unreasonable regulation. It has not been shown to me that um moving that building back, the building's going to be there, the daycare center is going to be able to operate there. Um, I, I don't see how moving the building back is an unreasonable exercise of our discretionary authority. And um, I agree with Adam. The whole, the whole issue about the barn is, you know, I, I think the record is clear that the barn really has nothing to do with the operation of the daycare center. You know, i- it's a storage facility. They can, they can easily, at fairly low cost, build in either a basement to this building or smaller outbuildings to, to give storage for this daycare center without having this forty-eight-hundred-square-foot barn um, which prevents moving the building back to a hundred and thirty-five feet.
Furthermore, if the barn was that, that instrumental in the whole of the thing, then they could have incorporated it into the design. This is a choice of their own making.
And you know something? There's plenty of land there. They really want to, and I've seen people pick up houses and move houses. They can pick up that barn and move it to the back of the lot.
That's been done in Needham. That was done on Greendale. Someone picked up a house and moved it, uh, you know, a few hundred feet off the street.
Yeah.
So.
Heck, the Baptist church was moved from, from the town common to, to the corner of Warham Street. And actually, now that I think about it, the First Parish Church, that building was moved from um Nahoyden Street to its current location.
So let me just chime in a little bit. Um, when, when Jean raised this uh previously and sees, she said she thought sixty-five feet could work. Um, I think what I said at the time was my preference would be to see it further back because I think it solves a lot of problems. Um, I don't know that there's anything specifically magical about a hundred and thirty-five feet versus, say, a hundred and thirty feet or a hundred and forty feet. I mean, there is something arbitrary about it, but um, something in that range makes sense to me. Um, so if somebody wanted to talk about a little bit of a movement, I'd be open to that, but s- at sixty-five feet and six feet higher, um, I don't know if it's going to be a monstrosity or an eyesore, but it's, it's, it's just going to be out of place. Um, I think, you know, Paul referenced the fact that the Design Review Board said at least twice, have you explored moving the building back? And why is the barn going to be there? What's the story with the barn? And the applicant has never really answered that question, either for the Design Review Board or us. And the Design Review Board, I believe, had a total of three hearings on this, and two of them were before we ever had our first hearing. So the applicant was on, on notice of this, and I think, I actually think there's a very easy solution to this whole situation. I really do, and I have thought so from the beginning. If the applicant would just take a fresh look and incorporate his childcare center, or rather incorporate the barn into the childcare center, which Adam has suggested more than once, it solves a lot of problems. And I, I, to this day, I don't understand why that hasn't been proposed. I'd be perfectly open to it. I think it's a solution. And if this case gets appealed, which Evans Huber has told us he's going to appeal it if we maintain these conditions. If it gets appealed, one of the things the court is almost certain to do, which is to say, can't you guys solve this? Go back and solve it. And I think that solution is right there for everybody. Um, I don't, I haven't heard anybody on this board or at the Design Review Board or anybody else who's commented on this proposal say anything to try to uh prohibit or bar the use of this property for a childcare center. That's what the Dover Amendment is all about. Can't prohibit it. You can't discourage it using all these ulterior motives. Nobody has said anything about that at all. It's all been about the conditions that we are authorized to propose and in, in, and will we propose them and in what way. So I'm perfectly open to, even now, having the proponent come back in and say, look, okay, we'll incorporate, we'll incorporate that tra- the barn into a new design, and I'd be perfectly happy. The problem has been all along here that the petitioner started out saying the barn has nothing to do with the childcare center. It won't have anything to do with the childcare center. I, we won't let it have anything, you know, on and on and on, and it, and the petitioner complains that it's been nine months already that we've been doing this. Well, it took the petitioner, I think, five months to come to the realization that, that he wasn't going to be able to use the barn for anything else. And even that's a potentially problematic uh position because of the, you can't have two non-residential uses or structures on a residential lot. So it's the barn that's been driving all of this stuff, as far as I'm concerned.
Including the setback.
Well, including the setback, and it's like the tail is wagging the dog. And I don't see anything in the case law or Petrucci that is anything like this situation. In Petrucci, which Attorney Huber has cited to us, in Petrucci, what happened was the proposal was for a new childcare center to go into an existing barn without any exterior or interior changes to the barn structure, nothing. And the town there turned them down. They denied the application. We're not denying it. We don't want to deny it. We're trying to figure out the conditions that'll make it work for no, for not only the childcare center, but the neighborhood, which has legitimate concerns, which they've expressed to us. So back to the key, would I be open to some adjustment in a hundred and thirty-five-foot setback? Yes. Would I be willing to make it go all the way back to sixty-five feet? Um, if the three of you agreed to that, I would go along with it, but I don't favor that. Um, and as for the barn, I don't care if the barn um is moved or demolished, but the bulk of that barn, together with a new ten thousand square foot building, creates all kinds of problems for me in, in terms of bulk, uh, setbacks, open space, building coverage requirements. I mean, it's, it becomes a very, um, all right, I'll use the word bulky. Um, bulkily covered lot, and that's just not, that, that's something we're allowed to think about, where, something we're allowed to condition uh, as I read the statute and the cases. And um, so I would say I'm willing to think about setback, but I, I, I don't think the barn makes any sense here. Again, just to repeat, and I'll shut up. The solution here is to incorporate the barn into the new childcare center. Um, I've thought so from the beginning, and I still think so. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, um, I actually want the setback far, farther back than sixty-five feet for two reasons. The first one I've already expressed because I just don't think that the design of this building, the size of this building. Because I just don't think that the design of this building, the size of this building. Looks, looks good in this neighborhood that close to the street. But the second reason is, in spite of the testimony that we had, even from our own expert. I feel that setting that building farther back, having a longer driveway. Will alleviate some of the traffic concerns. That, that I think still exists at sixty-five feet. That, that, that at sixty-five feet, you only have a ten-car lineup. From Central Avenue to the drop-off space. And I'm much happier if it gets set back to a hundred and thirty-five feet, give or take. A hundred and thirty-five feet, give or take, that adds another eight, nine, ten car lengths. To. Pickup and drop-off. Which, which um, I, I, I think that the traffic situation. I, I fear. I don't say I think. I fear that the traffic situation is going to be a problem. It's possible that it won't be. I've said from right along, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what the traffic situation will be. We've been in COVID. You know, it, it's. It's up in the air. The building's gonna get built. The daycare center is gonna be there. The traffic will be what it is, and if it's a problem, then the petitioner and we are gonna have to deal with it. And if it's not a problem, then it's not a problem.
One way to specifically look at that, I'll be right there, Jean, is, is. At, in the best-case scenario, the applicant enforces the sixty-second drop-off rule. I only have one kid. I don't have two or more. And.
Your kid's older than four years old.
He, he is now, but he wasn't before.
Right. So you know what it's like to try to drop off a four-year-old.
Yeah, when.
May not be in the best mood that morning.
Exactly, and he might be in a fine mood. I might be in a bad mood. So I'm not gonna totally blame, you know, a four-year-old, but I will say that in the best-case scenario. Presuming they can enforce this thing, and who knows if that's actually possible. The tenth car. That's basically at the intersection of the site driveway and Central Avenue. Will take ten minutes. To drop off their kid, or rather nine minutes. Before they're in the right position to drop off their kid. And, and. That's the ten-car-length queue that we're talking about at sixty-five feet. There is no doubt in my mind. That I, that if the setback was increased. That that room to queue would be larger. And it would abate some of the fear, Paul, that you're referring to. If we got, if we, in, in that ten. What that means is during that ten-minute period. For those ten cars to drop off their kids. We've got a backup on Central Avenue. Any car that's trying to make a left. Onto Central Avenue in the morning, or from Central Avenue in the morning. Is gonna be crossing heavy south, uh, northbound traffic. And there's no doubt that's gonna cause a problem. In fact, elsewhere in our decision, which I'll come to when we get into it. You know, we, there's a, there's a, a, a comment that says that the southbound traffic is. You know, more critical than the northbound traffic. I actually don't agree with that. I think the northbound traffic in the morning. Is just as much of a problem as the southbound traffic in the evening. So, the point is, the longer, the longer the setback, the more cars we get off Central Avenue onto the site. So. Jean, you had raised your hand. I wanted to be sure.
I'm glad that uh we have moved to talking about uh traffic because it's always been, you know, I, I. There were so many hearings. There were so much testimony by, by people in the neighborhood. What are they concerned about more than anything else? Traffic. And uh, the barn, although I agreed at the last meeting with the idea that. Well, it's not a customary accessory structure at that size. I still don't, I don't think it, it's harmful to the neighborhood to leave it there. Um, I don't think it's been that big a, a topic of objection by neighbors e- even. But we've got some excellent provisions in our decision for control of traffic. That um, um, from section three twelve. To uh, section three seventeen. If the, you know, we had to, we have, you know, good peer-reviewed traffic studies. But the neighbors are really worried and think those traffic studies could be mistaken. And there's going to be backups onto Central Avenue. We've got some very tight provisions here to make sure that doesn't happen. If it does happen, it's going to be addressed. And. If, you know, I don't want to see this get into litigation. I mean, it's been suggested that the result would be in a negotiation. Well, I hope so. But I don't wanna lose these provisions. And certainly, the pushing the building back makes the driveway longer. And, and you all voted for that. I thought, oh, well, it makes the driveway lo- longer. The, the provisions we have to make sure that there's no backup on um, Central Avenue, perhaps, you know. Uh, I was so focused on that. It's the most important thing. And that does address to some extent, as you said, moving the building back. But suppose we could have a compromise on moving the building back. Uh, I misspoke when I said the setback was uh thirty feet. I was looking at the chart just now, and it's thirty-five feet. And the amount that it was proposed to set the, the building back was sixty-four feet. Um, so that's just short of, of twice the uh stat, the bylaw requirement for setback. But what if we, what if we said ninety feet? What if we said ninety feet? That would bring the building back, so there's not as visible from the street. As you drive by, it's not as visible from the neighbors. Maybe it, maybe it affects the barn, but perhaps not. So then the barn becomes not an issue. And it's good enough.
Said about ninety feet.
Yeah.
I want, I want her, I want her to finish her thought, and then we'll, and then we'll come back to you on the.
I think I, I think I pretty much have finished the thought. I wanted especially to focus on the uh traffic mitigation plan and make sure we don't lose that. And uh to suggest that there might be a compromise here on the setback. That's all.
So if you look at the plans. The um, having the building at sixty-four feet. With the barn where it is. Just accomplishes the ability to have the spaces and the turnaround. And the drop-off. That the plan shows and that they need. With, you, you know, the spaces behind the barn that they. They, they, they anticipate. You move that building back another thirty feet. Twenty-five or thirty feet. They're gonna have to, and if they, and they wanna keep the barn, they're gonna lose those parking spaces. They're gonna lose that turnaround.
Yeah, we can't do that, obviously.
No, that's, that's not gonna work. Basically, basically sixty-four feet is where they can place the building and keep the barn. The way I look at the plans, anything farther back than that. Unless they put that building somewhere else on the lot. The barn has to be moved.
Okay. All right, then, I, I thought I'd throw it out. Um, I hadn't really measured to see what that would mean. So now I know, and I take that back, I guess. The compromise is impossible, so we're.
No, compromise isn't impossible. Part of the problem is. I hate to get hot under the collar on this, is that we haven't heard from the petitioner any willingness to compromise on this issue. None at all. Not in front of the Design Review Board, and not in front of us. His position has been that barn stays where it is.
To Marty's point.
And that's his story, and he's sticking to it.
Well, I had hope, you know, I threw it out and said, please, colleagues, can we rethink this? I don't know that there's a need to talk about it any further, if, if that's the position.
I think Marty is right and Paul are right. Jean, I'm sympathetic and I'd be open. The problem is that. This, the prob, Marty concisely pointed out the problem. It's the tail wagging the dog. And they haven't told us what's the significance of the tail. And that's been the driver, and that's been the problem. And for months. Since March or earlier, they've had an opportunity to be upfront about what was so special about the barn. And maybe it has something to do about their lack of, you know, about their desire to preserve the ability. To sub, further subdivide the lot. And that'll be another issue that we have to look at tonight. Maybe they wanna do something with the barn. I. I, I, I don't know that that's the case because I've got parking out behind the barn as it is now. You know, and, and they've been insistent about preserving the barn without telling us the real reason why. And ultimately, they, they uh acquiesced to us in agreement that it can only be used. For, as an ancillary purpose. But to Marty's earlier point. It's, doesn't really, notwithstanding the comment that, I think if I read correct, if I remember correctly. Our building commissioner said the use. Qualifies as an accessory use perhaps, but the problem is that we don't have any evidence. Of, you know, a mass fifty percent the size or forty-eight percent of the size. Of the principal daycare anywhere in Needham or in the environment. In the environs as, as uh fifty percent of the primary structure to be used for ancillary purposes. And the only ancillary purposes that he has suggested so far has been uh, storage. A forty-eight hundred square foot facility. I mean, my, my first house in Needham was a thousand square feet. And when I moved to this house, which is a little larger. You know, we packed a lot into that house. Big furniture, small furniture, and a whole house of other stuff. Forty-eight hundred square feet are the size of the homes on Country Way. So um. It's just not there yet. So let's now uh dig into the decision. And um. We'll start with page one. I don't know, I had a question before. On the last paragraph of page one. The chair of the actual hearing changed. Is that something that we need or want to? Note?
Lee, do you think that's important?
I can change, I, I can clarify it. Certainly. I can, I can indicate which meetings, which meetings you chaired and which meetings Adam chaired. Not a problem.
I, I, I don't know if that's, you know, I've just raised the question, if that's something that's. You know, important or not. I don't know, but I just wanted to ask the question. We haven't, we have some additional changes that have been made throughout the exhibits. Does anybody have any other comments or questions before we get to what is page sixteen of the decision? Their findings and conclusions? It sounds like we're resolved up to that point. In, in findings one point four, I made an, I had a question. Where it says the proposed project provides that the childcare facility will house an existing Needham childcare business, namely. The Needham Children's Center. Is there a benefit? To say that uh, something like although we have not been provided with a lease? Is that material or not? I know that, that town council before. Had demonstrated, provided a case to us in which another developer. Uh, developed a daycare facility without, at that time, having a, you know, a tenant locked in or a daycare to move in. But I just wanted to.
Didn't even mention a potential by name.
What's that?
That case didn't even mention a potential daycare center by name. It just.
Correct.
Was the representation by, by the developer that, that, that he would be leasing it to a childcare facility.
Correct. So do we?
I don't think it's necessary. I mean, if we. If you wanna make the record clear that. That a lease has not been provided, I think we can just add a sentence to, to one point four. That states that uh, no, no written commitment. Between the, the petitioner and the Needham Children's Center has been provided to the board.
Um, excuse me, uh, section three point one nine, um, just got to it here. Doesn't that address this? The initial operator shall be. And what, a copy of the lease agreement between the petitioner and NCC, which confirms this operational agreement. So, I mean, us, we could, we could uh set out as a fact that it's been represented to us that this currently not a lease. However, the, et cetera. Um, but I don't know if we really need to. We're saying right here, it has to be Needham Children's Center in section three one nine.
Yeah.
It ca, it came up several, at several points during the hearing. You're right, Jean, to point out that we say that they shall provide us with a copy of the lease. Uh, as a condition, but as a statement of fact, is it material? To acknowledge that I, we don't have, that, that no agreement has been provided to us. Between the petitioner and the daycare se, operator.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Yeah, fine, sure.
By the way, I don't think I'm looking at the latest version. Lee, did you make a, a universal change to put in NCC everywhere and Needham Children's Center appeared?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Cause yeah, mine is an earlier version, sorry.
I guess the question is whether we want it in the finding of facts. So that it's in the record in front of the judge when this gets appealed.
Why not?
Why not?
Doesn't hurt us.
To one point four about the fact that we've not been provided. Now, I, I specifically said, you know. A written agreement, um, you, you know, we could say a lease, a memorandum of understanding, or any other written agreement. Has not been provided.
I'm fine. In paragraph one point seven, uh, Lee, we talked about the parking gen, the I, the. Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generate, Parking Generation Manual, the second edition. I think the current edition might be the fourth edition. I don't know if it's.
That wasn't the point. I was quoting the bylaw, and what the bylaw says is the second.
Okay. Next time we're amending the bylaws, maybe we could update that to say that we're the most current version of.
Okay.
Gold, just only to get, obviously, the standards change over time, but uh.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good thing that we're not psych, psychiatrists or doctors and relying on an old version of the.
We're allowed to look at a substitute version, so we're looking at the most current, but the language of the bylaw hasn't been changed, and I was quoting the language of the bylaw, so.
Okay, that's fine.
At, at one point seven, at one point seven, the next to last sentence, does that now say twenty-nine calculated parking spaces?
Yes, but if Pat Day is gonna have nineteen employees, if you decide to change that, then, then the standard, then the requirement's gonna be thirty.
Um, she, she didn't say that she was going to have nineteen employees. What she was suggesting is that uh, from time to time, there'd be um, specialists who would drop by for. Seemed like brief. for seemed like brief periods of time, who might be evaluating the child or providing occupational or physical therapy. That's different from an employee.
Right, so, 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 well, I'm still comfortable with the idea that applying the formula leads to a calculated parking requirement of twenty-nine spaces. The petitioner is proposing thirty spaces.
Yeah.
And then later, when we make our conditions, we're requiring thirty spaces.
Right. Kind of work, yeah.
Yeah.
Just for clarity, in the third draft that Lee had sent to us, at the bottom, it, the se- uh, it does say thirty spaces, not twenty-nine.
In one point seven?
In one point seven.
No, it says, apply, applying this formula leads to a calculated parking requirement of twenty-nine spaces. The petitioner is proposing thirty onsite parking spaces.
So in draft, in what I have of the third draft, in the.
I sent you, I, I, I sent you a second, today I sent two things because I didn't fix the parking one. So maybe you printed out the earlier one. I sent you a red line that had everything in it but the parking, uh, number corrected. And then I sent it to you a second time with that number corrected. So, and the one that's on, in the packet has the twenty-nine in it.
So the final one's going to say twenty-nine, Adam.
Yes.
We're going to be clear. The one we sign, the one that's going to be, the one that's going to go to the town clerk is going to have twenty-nine.
Wonderful. Um, in, I had a comment at one point eight. I kind of mentioned this a, a minute or two ago, where we say that, um, uh, the morning counts, uh, were not available at, uh, Central Avenue Charles River intersection. But the evening peak hour period was more critical due to the predominant southbound movement and queuing implications during this period. And I understand that when the predominant traffic flow is southbound and we're adding theoretically additional southbound traffic for parents to pick up their kids. I get that. But that morning traffic out is not nothing. And you're going to have, uh, you know, eighty-five cars at bet- you know, at, uh, at best.
So what do you want to say, what do you want to say there, Adam?
I just, I don't, um.
Excuse me, aren't we summarizing, um, what our traffic, um, um, consultant said? Uh, do we want to change that?
He's right.
This came right out of the traffic report that was submitted that John had, 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 um, reviewed. So I assume it was an accurate statement.
Remember, Adam, these are findings of fact.
I, I under- I understand, I understand.
You know, and so, and so we're, we're reciting what the traffic, Jake, Gene is right. We're reciting what the traffic report tells us.
Is that clear?
Well.
If that's what you're doing.
Where specifically are you looking at?
Counts.
Where specifically in section one point eight? Can you, can you, can you, can you get me to where you're?
To where I am, sure. So in her, so article one point eight, I'm actually on page eighteen.
So, so at the bottom of the page?
At the, uh, it's actually the top of the page of eighteen that I have. The second to last, the end of the second to last sentence. It says, the sentence reads, "The morning counts here were not available at the Central Ave slash Charles River Street intersection. But the evening peak hour was more critical due to the predominant southbound movement and queuing implications during this period."
So, Lee, are you saying that that entire section of one point eight is word for word out of the report?
It's, it's a summation of what was in the report, yes.
Well, I just think we need to make that clear.
Let, let me, let me.
The beginning of the paragraph states specifically, "The report provided by the petitioner assessed traditional operational characteristics at the unsignalized Central Avenue intersection at the site driveway and at the signalized Central Avenue, uh, Charles River Street intersection."
So what if we precede that sentence? What if we start that paragraph by specifically saying, "The following is a summary of the petitioner's traffic analysis as presented to the board?"
I'm fine with that. I think we want to make the distinction that that's not necessarily a finding of fact, but it's a representation that was made to us by the trap, by the applicant.
It's a finding of fact of what's in the report is what it is.
If we state it that way.
Yeah.
Then it's a finding of what the report tells us.
That's why the distinction I'm choosing to make.
Yeah.
So did you get that language, Leo, you, anything like that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll figure out something.
Okay.
And then in one one, it says, "A level of service analysis conducted at the Central Avenue intersection at the site driveway shows a calculated A level of service for all northbound movements in the morning and evening peak periods and a calculated B level of service of all southbound movements in the morning and evening peak periods, both of which are acceptable for this type of facility." I actually don't think that's accurate.
Again, is this a paragraph that's out of the report?
Yes.
So is that true of one point eight, one point nine, one point ten, one point eleven, one point twelve? And one point thirteen?
Right, they're all take, they're all taking the critical elements out of the report and re- kind of restating them.
Okay.
So they all have to specify that this is what the report provides.
Right.
The report.
Okay, fine.
The report provides that.
Because in actual fact, the level of service that, and John Diaz made an, a distinction about this. The level of service on the street was actually an F. It's not an A, it's not a B, it was an F. But the site act, but the, but the driveway.
The driveway was a, was a B. I think the report said, call it out as an A.
But the driveway, the driveway is irrelevant.
The turning movement, I think, in as a driveway was a B. Okay, I'll, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll put the introduction that you asked for, it's coming out of the report.
Yes.
Is that true of them? Is it one fourteen as well, Lee, that it's out of the report?
Yes, all this information was coming out of the traffic reports.
Where does that stop?
Well, was one fourteen out of the traffic report or is one fourteen a representation from the Needham Children's Center to us? I've got the Needham Children's Center has provided information detailing the number of children and cars anticipated to arrive. And I thought that was a chart that she gave to us.
I don't think so.
That was a chart that she gave to us, but then it's repeated in the, in the traffic study. The totals are, have been repeated in the traffic study.
Right.
Okay.
So, and, and what about one fifteen?
That's out of the traffic report.
And one sixteen?
That's al- that's also from, uh.
Yes, that's what out of John Diaz, that's what he was recommending.
Okay, so let's just make clear in each one of those paragraphs where that material comes from.
Okay, fine.
And I think it stops at one sixteen. I think one seventeen, now we're into.
Right.
Okay.
And I don't know whether we should say that we adopt or don't adopt all the findings in those several paragraphs.
Um, I agree.
Well, John Diaz has, has reviewed that, that information as your peer reviewer at the end, and he's agreed with what's been presented, so.
I don't, Marty, I'm going to disagree on that one. I think we should leave that blank, leave it, you know, and we're just providing the facts that these are our findings of facts, that this is what the reports provide. This is, this is what the petitioner's traffic study provides. This is what John Diaz provides. And then in, in article three, we present our conditions. And that's really the important position. The important provisions are in article three, not, not, not in article one.
Except, except that to Marty's point, John did not go out and do his own real independent study. If I remember correctly, he did, he did kind of an informal one. But if I, he reviewed the information provided to him. But the information provided to him, you know, the source information may not necessarily have been reliable. So.
But that's based on existing counts, I mean, I mean.
It, no, it was re- it was, it was based on, it was based on traffic counts conducted by the petitioner's traffic engineer at a time when there was no real traffic. Number one. And number two, when that was pointed out to him, it was then in conversation with John Diaz, the applicant instead, um, uh, agreed to use the algorithm determined by the ITE as the standard for traffic based on the, uh, historic growth pattern from the pre-pandemic period.
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily accurately can, uh, uh, describe what the actual traffic pattern is without the traffic.
How about this language? Adding a one sentence, new numbered paragraph after all of these and before we get to one seventeen. So it would be an, 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 a new one seventeen, one, one point one seven, that just says, "This board has not, this board has not reached any conclusions as to the accuracy or, um, there's probably another word to put in there. This board."
Validity.
Or, but validity is a tough word. As to the accuracy or con- this board has not reached any conclusions as to the accuracy or validity of the, um,
Foregoing findings.
Provided in the traffic reports.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you can possibly say that and then they basically find that you're going to prove a site plan.
Yes, I, I think somebody said, oh, I think it was Adam who said, "We might put in something how we adopt these findings." So somebody, and I was thinking, no, no, we don't say that.
No, we never say that.
But we don't say, the opposite, as you said, Paul, that we, we.
Okay.
Undermine our, our, our own consultant's work.
Then let's just be silent.
I, that's not.
I would not, oh, do that.
So for claire- for clarity, I'm not looking to undermine the work that our peer reviewer did at all. I'm making a distinction that the peer reviewer reviewed the work that was, you know, from a, uh, from a, you know, from the app, from the applicant. And then did an additional, uh, uh, formula based on subsequent information that he was provided without actually conducting his own traffic review. So Gene, he's working off of the source information. And I think it's, and a number of us, if I remember correctly, including you, Gene, didn't agree with some of the conclusions initially drawn or borne out by the applicant's traffic engineer.
I was skeptical until our peer reviewer reported that, um, basically he was satisfied. Um, he did ask for further study, for further analysis. But, um, I have actual confidence in the integrity of both of these men. Both the, um, the applicant's traffic engineer and Mr. Diaz. And if you're questioning their integrity and that they would prevent false, present false information. I don't, I don't, I would never say that.
I understand that. I'm not saying.
Adam, the board, the board, the board needs to make a finding that they found that this pro- that this project is going to work okay in terms of its traffic impacts. And that, that finding sits on a foundation of the analysis that was done. And in order to prove a site plan, you have to make that finding, so.
Let me back up a second. We had said that one point sixteen was also part of the report. But one point sixteen is a combination of things. One point sixteen is John Diaz's conclusions about the report and some remedies. And it finishes with the board saying, "The board finds the foregoing elements of the plan, minimize traffic delays in the area and provide adequate access." So one point sixteen, not just from Diaz.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep, yep. I say, I say leave it alone. Because Lee is right, we need to make that statement, we need to have a finding about it. We do, we do find that because we're, we're, you know, that, that the elements minimize traffic delays. Um, so we just need to make it clear where the information came from because we, we have findings of fact. We know, these are the findings of fact that we found that this, this report says this, this report says this. And, um, because you're right, be, be, because if we don't make that finding that's at the end of one sixteen, we shouldn't be issuing a decision.
Right, I understand.
I understand, Ann, that John Diaz is present and has his hand up.
Okay, uh, we, I, I'm happy to bring him in. I will say this, I in no way am doubting the work that, uh, or integrity of the work that John Diaz has done at all. I understand the point that you guys are making that we need to make a determination as we have in one sixteen in particular at the end. All I was looking to do was make a distinction of the source of the information and that they're not conclusions by this board for those, you know, for those previously enumerated points. That, that I'm satisfied with that. Um, so I'm happy to bring, uh, Alex, if you can bring John Diaz in if, if, uh, you know, if we need to, but otherwise I was satisfied to move forward. What does the rest of the board think? Here's John. Give him a second to populate over.
Good day, guys.
Good evening, thanks. Thanks for indulging us and thanks for the hour.
Oh, it's good, it's good, uh, it's, uh, good information, so. Um, no, I just wanted to, to, uh, hold on one sec, let me just close the door. I, I just wanted to, to clarify on that, that first statement in particular about the, the AMP being the, the most critical and all that. That, those are quotes for, those are quotes from the Gillen report. We, we had a whole supplemental responses to that, asking for more data that that wasn't, we didn't feel that was an accurate statement, that it, the AM was more important than, than the last. So it, I, listening to you guys, it sounds like you're talking about just what was presented in the, the original report, but none of the correspondence that followed after that. Us requesting more data, him providing more data, him providing additional counts that were done as recently as Oc- October, us reviewing that, us reviewing the, the calculations and the factorization that he made from the various counts that we had from the dump and from other places on the corridor to get us to the point where we had data that we felt was reasonable. So that's the point I just wanted to make, that there was a, a lot that happened, you know, going back and forth with the, the various submissions and letters that we prepared and the comments. And I mean, if you remember those letters, they had tiers and tiers and tiers of comments and responses on, on different topics.
That's excellent, John. Thank you for, for filling us in and, and reminding us of all that. And I do, I think that's exactly right. We need to add a sentence or two at the beginning of one sixteen that talks about the give and take that John's describing, uh, over months, uh, which resulted in his final assessment.
Yeah, so John, the next paragraph of it talks about, I think, the study that you had him do, um, with the actual updated counts, um, at Central Avenue.
Right.
Was superseded, I think, the earlier work.
Right. The, the, the first time he did it, he had done one count in the afternoon. And that was like, I, I, from like, then what, I don't know, might've been June or something like that. I mean, that's how far back this, this goes. That was what was in the original study.
Right.
And then we had some older counts. I think they were like two thousand sixteen, maybe from up by the dump. And then there were some other counts that were at the signalized intersection. Again, they were older ones. And so we kind of combined everything and, and used some factoring to say, okay, if we look at this and we look at what the counts would be up at the dump and given the, the amount of distance and how much traffic would split off at various roads and stuff, these numbers seem to, seem to make sense. And that was all because of COVID. We couldn't go out and just, I mean, we did go out and count, or I should say, he did go out and count in October. But again, there's still some question about whether the traffic levels are where they normally would be.
So I think that I, I would like to see it, a new paragraph, one sixteen. Uh, you know, identify, you know, the exchanges, the fact that we're new, that there were new, that there were new counts, that those new counts have been, uh, you know, peer reviewed by, uh, by, uh, G P I and what, and effectively what the conclusions were as, you know, and the methodology that, uh, that John arrived, that John Diaz arrived at with John Gillen to provide the final understanding of the traffic count, which leads us to effectively the, you know, uh, to the outcome identified in one point one six.
I think that's basically what's coming in paragraph one thirteen and one fourteen and one fifteen. That was, that's the follow-up work. That's the follow-up work that he's talking about.
You just have to make it clear in those paragraphs where the information is coming from.
Whether it was John Diaz or John Gillen.
And maybe, and, and maybe by date according to, you, you, you know, the.
Okay, I can do that. I can, I can go back to the report and the date that it's, that it's referenced in.
Yep.
John, that's really good of you to be here tonight and to point that out and to make those distinctions. That's very relevant.
The dates, you show the progression.
Right.
Gene, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, although I'm not saying we should change it in, at the very, at last sentences of three point one six, uh, we say that the, um, petitioner shall further fund a peer review of the post occupancy traffic study. And we say the same things in our, in our conditions in, in three point one six. Um, I was referring to one point one six and also three point one six. I just want to make sure you, you know, that.
Well, you lost me, Gene. Wait, wait.
Yeah, we, we were talking about one point one six. And there is a sentence in it at the very, at the end when we talk about the, um, post occupancy studies. It says, the petitioner shall further fund a peer review of this post occupancy traffic study. Then three point one six, the conditions makes it even more clear that, um, the petitioner shall pay the reasonable fees of any consultants and peer reviews as necessary for the board to review and analyze any submitted T D M work plans or T D M monitoring efforts. That's fine. That's great. Um, that's what it should be. Um, but I, I did want to note that in his memo of January thirty first, Attorney Huber said, although, you know, he says, this, you know, post occupancy study whole business is new to him. But he would agree to this, uh, condition. Plus all that agreeing to conditions had to do with us not, not changing the setback. If the applicant is not once again required to pay for peer review of the work done by its own traffic engineer. So I'm not saying we should change it. I just wanted us to be aware.
I have another suggestion.
He has an objection to that. Yeah.
I have another suggestion that we, that, that may clarify things. If you look at the beginning of one point one six, we've got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines of one, of one sentence that ends with, and safety conditions in the area. The next sentence starts, to minimize traffic delays in the area, the following study recommendations have been incorporated in the plan and will be implemented by the petitioner. I think that should be the start of a new paragraph.
Yes. That comes.
That's the conclusion. That's the conclusion.
Whose conclusion is that? Is that our conclusion?
It's our conclusion. No, they've incorporated it. They've incorporated it, but this is, this is, this is what's being done. To minimize traffic delays in the area, the following study recommendations have been, have been incorporated in the plan and will be implemented by the petitioner. A, a police detail will be provided.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
All, Paul, all I'm asking.
Prior, prior to the building permit being issued, the petitioner shall provide.
Paul, we, Paul, we understand. We understand.
I'm just, I'm just trying to find out, did that material with the study recommendations, did that originate with John Diaz?
Yes.
Yes.
So it should say that.
Agreed.
Well, it's been something I've been saying right along too. This idea of post occupancy traffic study.
Okay. So you want me to give credit where credit is due for all these paragraphs? I understand.
Right, right.
We, we principally.
Do you want us to give you credit where credit is due?
I could kill.
So here, so there, I, I'm, I'm making a distinction for important reasons.
No, I, I understand. I'm not, I'm not, I, I didn't, I hope I didn't come across in, in to belittle you. I wasn't, I did not mean that. I just wanted to say, I think I understand what you want me to do now.
Because more specifically because, you know, some of the findings that were made by the orig, you know, originally by the petitioner are not, are not findings that we all effectively agreed with. We ultimately agreed with, uh, John Diaz, you know, as a result of an extensive program of work that he did with John Gillen. For which we're very grateful, including your appearance tonight at your ten o'clock, eleven o'clock.
I think the point is we need to be clear about what our findings are.
Yes, exactly right. I concur. All right, John, I think, uh, we can probably move forward. Uh, John, we can have you go back to attendees. That way you get the real credit.
Thanks. All right, guys. Take care. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Very kindly.
Thank you.
All right, um, my next comment in paragraph one point two was, um, at the last sentence.
One point two. One point two.
One point twenty?
One point twenty.
One point twenty. Right.
I apologize. Thanks, Marty. One point two zero. I'm at that, I've reached that point in my life, that milestone where I have to take my glasses off back and forth between the screen and the print. So, uh, thanks for, for raising that. Uh, the last sentence of that first paragraph, with the town's interest in preserving the appearance, I would recommend changing that to character.
What does our bylaw say?
Character. It comes from the site plan review.
I'm looking.
Site plan review.
Um, I'm looking at the review criteria. I'm not quite seeing that. Looking at page tw- two eighteen. In reviewing, in conducting site plan review, consider the following matters. Um.
Yeah, it, it, it doesn't use either, either word. In E, it says, relationship of structures and open spaces to the natural landscape, existing buildings and other community assets in the area.
Well, let's use that language.
Great. Further in the next, into the, about the middle of the next paragraph of one point two zero, after, um, uh, with the remainder ten properties, uh, presenting with front yard setbacks in the range of a hundred and three to a hundred and seventeen feet. Do we want to say that, uh, none of which are, um, are comparatively sized buildings of, you know, plus or minus ten thousand square feet? And do we also want to say that the abutter to the north has a setback of two hundred and thirteen feet? And.
That's it. Well, that's the next sentence. There weren't institutional use in the neighborhood, namely Temple Alia, which abuts the subject property, front yard setback of two hundred and thirteen feet is provided.
Right. That's right. So, um, then do we want to say at the end of that preceding paragraph, none of which are, have comparatively sized buildings uh, of, uh, plus or minus ten thousand square feet uh, per the propos, you know, per the proposal.
I mean, we can make reference to, there is an exhibit that shows that, I'm sure. I know. Maybe just say C exhibit blank.
Great. Me, if you're able to do that, I'm fine with that solution.
Oh, just reference the exhibit? Okay.
Yeah, it shows that, yeah.
Okay.
Small minor thing. In, uh, one point two two, her, uh, uh, sub paragraph G, lighting on the site shall not cause a public health nuisance with lighting trespassing onto other abutters. Should we say with light and drop the I N G?
I'm sorry, I lost where you were.
You're in one point two two G, not one point two one G.
One point two two G.
Right.
Page twenty four.
I see it on twenty, twenty five. All right, whatever. It's one twenty two.
You mean to say light trespass rather than lighting trespassing? Is that right?
No, light trespassing.
Oh.
Lighting on the site shall not cause a public health nuisance with lighting tre, with light trespassing on other abutting properties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I like that change. Yeah.
In paragraph one point two six, where we say, to this end, the operator shall regularly review its drop off and pickup schedule and will enforce such schedule among its customers. I'd like to add, including sixty second drop offs per child. That's what they've represented to us.
Well, but this.
I, 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 I see that being challengeable as being too as being unreasonable. You know, you know, what are they going to do? We're going to force them to be out there with a stopwatch? I don't, I don't, I don't know that a judge is going to look kindly on on that kind of, um.
And yet if it actually takes two and a half minutes to get a kid out of the car and settled, you go from a difference of ten, ten minutes for that tenth car to twenty five minutes on Central Avenue.
We have a condition that says, if the traffic isn't working.
That's true.
Now, we gotta work on, they without, they have to work with us on fixing it.
Yes. And, and more to the point, in this particular paragraph, this is, this is about staggering times of arrival. This isn't about, you know, how many seconds each kid's going to take to get out of the car. This.
I wasn't, I wanted to, because those were all based on the representations that she made. So I wasn't sure if we wanted to incorporate that, but I'll move on.
Yep.
Uh, in paragraph two point one, subsection A, the design review board, uh, uh, said.
Did you grab this bottle from the door of the fridge? I'm just, for some reason, I'm thirsty.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Can you grab me an apple from the fridge too? Um.
Do you have a beer?
This hour is bourbon for me. Uh, having said it, so, um, uh, we talked, the, the design review board referenced a preference for a wooden fence. That's true. Or if they were going to go with vinyl, that it was a dark green in color. I don't know if we want to go beyond what the design review board said.
I thought, actually, I remember reading that too and thinking, uh, did we mean to be that strict? Uh, because I thought there was something about how darker colored vinyl is, is good too. Do you think so?
I mean, I would certainly prefer the wood. It would look a lot nicer. However, you know, I just remember, I just wanted to flag it because that was in the specifically called out on the design review board.
I went with the wooden fence because that was their preference. And I thought that was aesthetically a better choice.
That was whose preference? The design review board?
The wooden fence.
Yeah, I kind of like the wooden fence also. Probably about the fence along the Hydamon property.
Where the, uh, okay.
To add on that.
What, what did you say, Marty?
I have nothing to add on that point.
Okay.
My next point is in paragraph three point eight.
Um, I think we need to go back if we can to D.
Oh.
Um, this is the one that deals with the setback of the building. And I had just kind of put a placeholder in because we had talked about, you had indicated that you wanted to make sure that the parking lot itself um, was pulled away from the southerly property line. Um, and so I tried to put in just a condition that would deal with that. Um, but I wasn't sure whether or not the standard that I had um, put in as a placeholder would work, which was that the parking lot should be, um, I think I put in fifty feet, um, from the southern property line. But I did have, um, it looked at today, um, um, by engineering and John Diaz. And so when they were looking at it, they told me, um, probably thirty five feet, thirty, thirty five feet was a more appropriate standard um, to enable them to build it. So that number needs to be changed, uh, from fifty feet down to a smaller number. And maybe with a, you know, maybe a provision where, for some landscaping along that edge.
Agreed and agreed.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm lost on what section we're on.
We're on.
Gene, we're at two point one D.
D.
Some paragraph D like normal.
No, I just didn't see fifty, fifty feet. So it's.
And so I think maybe thirty feet with a.
A landscape buffer?
Yeah.
Did they say thirty or thirty five?
He said, um, it looked like thirty five, but I would rather just, you know, be careful and. Um.
I'd, I'd rather go with the thirty five myself. I'd like to give it much of a buffer as, as everybody seems to think of it.
Let's say thirty five.
Okay, with landscaping.
Right.
I'm sorry, guys. I, I, I still don't know where you are. Two point one D.
D as in David.
Yeah. Where does it talk about?
The remainder, in the, in the middle of the paragraph, the remainder.
The remainder twenty five. Oh, there it is. There it is. Sorry. Now I finally see it. Okay. Fifty foot and we're changing it to something else?
Thirty five.
Thirty five feet with landscaping.
Okay, got it.
With landscaping. Unless anyone has anything further, I'd like to go to one, uh, to paragraph three point eight, under conditions. Which currently says, all buildings and land constituting the property shall remain under a single ownership. Which currently says, all buildings and land constituting the property shall remain under a single ownership, and the property shall not be further subdivided. I don't know if we should add here without subsequent approval by this board.
Well, any subdivision has to approve by this board, doesn't it? I mean, even if it's an A and R plan, we have to approve an A and R plan.
Yeah, but I think here, the, here the idea was, can the parcel be made smaller under the terms of this special permit without amending the special permit? I mean, yes, if he, if he subdivides the land, then he has to bring in an A and R plan or subdivision plan to, to do it, but how does that?
Well, he would actually, actually, he would, he would have to provide us with a subdivision plan because he couldn't possibly, with this building being where it is, he couldn't possibly have enough frontage to have a second lot that has frontage on Central Avenue.
Yeah, with the back.
With subdivision plan.
That's right.
The back pieces could be cut off and, and annexed onto a budding lots. I mean, you don't really know what's gonna happen, so it would have to be.
Wait, 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 wait. If he cuts off something in the back and the property owner in the back wants to buy that lot from him, why should we object to that now? What's, what?
Well, that's the question. You're, you're.
Where is that a problem?
Yeah, maybe we don't need that provision at all.
I mean, Evan Huber had, did object to this provision.
Mm-hmm.
And I think may, maybe legitimately so. This, this one may be unreasonable. Why, because why should we prevent him, as long as he maintains an acre of property with the frontage on Central Avenue, why should we prevent him from cutting it off in the back and selling it to an abutting piece of property? That's we've got no legitimate.
Well, when Ted, I remember when Ted Owens was on this board, and he really decried the idea of building a house behind a house.
But we're not talking about building a house behind a house. We're talking about just subdividing the lot. He wants to build a house behind the house, he has to come to us with a subdivision plan. Because I don't see where he can have a second lot that has frontage on Central Avenue where there are two lots that each have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Central Avenue. He's going to have to come in showing us where he's putting a road to the back and building a house.
And he couldn't do that and, and still be providing the driveway, the daycare, just.
Yeah.
Possible.
The whole thing was, you know, partly predicated on the size of the lot. So I, I, I'm not a fan of, of removing the provision, and if the neighbors wanna buy up, you know, that's, you know, if they wanna to subdivide it and the neighbors buy it to extend their backyards, that's one thing.
And by the way, what does, what does single ownership mean?
That's, that's a standard condition we have in.
No, 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 I'm trying to interpret the language. Because right now, because right now, there's a single owner. It's an LLC. If, if, if Matt terminates the LLC and conveys the property to himself, it's now under single ownership. If he conveys the property to himself and his wife, is that single ownership? Or has he violated this provision?
Yeah. Yeah, single, that terminology, single ownership is problematic. It is. Um, I don't think that's what you really mean. I think what you really mean is the entire property needs to be owned by a single owner entity.
No, well, no, it, it means, it means that the, 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 the entire property can't be subdivided.
Well, let's say that.
What?
Well, then let's say that. Well, why? But you gotta justify it. Why? What, what's so important about it?
What?
We've generally had conditions that, so that once we issue us a site plan approval on a property, the, the whole has to stay the same. You can't take a chunk of it and, and give it away unless you come back to the board. Because you're, you're issuing the permit based upon um a situation that's understood. This, you, you might not allow a particular use on a, on a, on a, it, there may be mitigating surface circumstances that come by placing a use on a larger lot, for example, but you wanna preserve. And so generally.
But Lee, this is a Dover amendment use. If this were a one acre lot, we would still have to allow this use. It happens to be a three and a half acre lot.
Right, so what, so we're dealing with this, let's say, maybe one third acre in the back. Okay, not a, uh, let's say it's an acre in the back, okay?
Wants to chop off an acre in the back.
And, you know, if someone's gonna buy it, and they're either gonna, they're either gonna build on it or not, right? Those are the only two options.
They can only build on it if they have access to the road.
Right, and that would have to be an easement, you know, through this site driveway, but by doing that, it's gonna compound the traffic.
It's right, Adam, it's zoned residential.
I under- I understand, I understand that.
A builder can come in now and subdivide this lot and put two houses on here. Probably come in and put, find a way to put three houses on here. If they can, if they can configure the, a roadway that only, that, that only uses up a third of an acre. By right, well, kind of by right. I don't see, I don't see, I don't see where we have a legitimate purpose under the law or under the bylaw to prevent, to, to have a condition that says that the building and the land shall remain under single ownership and shall not be further subdivided, where the law allows it to be subdivided into, into at, at least one acre with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And if he doesn't have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on Central Avenue, he's gonna do it by, by the subdivision regulations, which means that he's in front of us with a subdivision plan. Which, which if we don't like it, we can reject it.
I'm just looking at our own, at our own zoning map. Our zoning map has, has the lots, and I think the one talking about is a long, thin lot.
Yeah, it gets narrower in the back, too.
It goes narrower in the back. The only rea- the only reason it would ever be subdivided would be to provide the houses on country way with bigger backyards.
Or, or.
Get it, I just, just.
Or if the developer wants it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't.
I, I agree with Paul on this one.
Yeah.
Do you want to get rid of the phrase and the property shall not be further subdivided?
Yeah.
Well, I, no, but Marty and I have a problem with the phrase under single ownership.
Right, I just give it a three point eight altogether.
Just get rid of uh three point eight altogether?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wanna get rid, I think we should just get rid of three point eight. I don't think that we have a re- I think it's unreasonable for us to have that in there. That's an unreasonable condition.
In this case.
In this case, yeah.
The only thing that he can come to us with, or he or someone else, is a subsequent allowed use. Including an additional daycare.
What, wait a minute, I, I, did you just change, change the subject? I'm not sure I understand what you're saying, Adam.
He subdivides the land. He has to come back to us.
He still has to put a road, he still has to put in a road to get back there, Adam.
Or just an evening.
With a subdivision plan. That's separate, that's, that's separate from the Dover amendment.
I, if the use is a sing- I mean, it can only be in allowed use, which is a resident, a single residence A, uh, sorry, single residence district, so it can only be a sing- a home, and maybe.
Or another use that we presently allow under.
Into that, right.
Yeah.
See, part, I think part of the issue here is that he's given us a plan, he's given us a zoning compliance table, he showed us how this particular proposal meets the lot coverage requirement, meets the FAR requirement, meets the setback standards. And now if he um modifies the lot, um, you're not, there's not, this zoning compliance analysis that you've done, that you predicated your permit on, has been modified. And so I think the reason this condition was in there was, oh, if he does, if, you know, it has to stay as a whole, or he can come back in amendment and show you how, when he changes it, it's still gonna be compliant.
Which he will do as part of the subdivision plan, right?
But it, it was linked in with this, it was linked in with this, with the permit itself. So the permit itself was basically saying, here's what you propose, here's the zoning compliance that you presented, if you wanna change it, come back to us, um, and, and it can be changed.
But Lee, he has to come back to us. Either it's an A and R plan, either it's an A and R plan or it's a subdivision plan. He has to come back to us. If he comes to us with an A and R plan, and pursuant to the A and R plan, this daycare center now fails to meet our bylaw for FAR, you're gonna be all, all, all over them like white on rice. You're putting, you're putting your daycare center into violation of the bylaw. And you can't do that.
So he has to affirmatively prove that by subdividing the land and putting one, two, three, or four houses in the back there, that the original daycare maintains compliance here.
Which, which, which triggers, which, and the reason this language is here is so that it triggers an amendment to this permit. But.
But he has to come back to us without triggering an amendment to this permit in order to, in order to subdivide.
Is, is, is the concern um that he could lop off little parcels in the back and, and sell them to neighbors? Um, and that our, our ability to object to that under the very limited ways we can object to an F, uh, to an approval not required plan, you know, is limited, so we might have some problems. Is that, is that the issue?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what the issue is, Jean, because what you just said is, why do we have a legitimate reason under law or under our bylaw to object to their chopping off parcels of land and deeding it to the neighbors?
Well, because it could review, it could reduce the FAR.
Well, if it redo, if it reduces the FAR, then the building will be, will not be in compliance. And, you know, we, we go to the building commissioner, and, and we say that this, this building isn't in compliance, you have to enforce.
But we still have to endorse the um approval not required plan, right?
That's right, and if, and if in reviewing the approval not required plan, I mean, I've seen this before where Lee has said, we have an A and R in front of us, but, you know, by by approving the, the um A and R, the existing building will not be in compliance. And so she points out to the developer, you can't do that because the existing building won't be in compliance. You can't, you can't do it until you take the existing building off the property. We've seen that happen.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, whatever, you know, we can delete it, you know. What do you think?
I don't think there's any real danger there, Lee. I think we have, we'll, we'll have the ability to check it every point, no matter what he does on that.
Okay.
Or you will. I'll be long gone.
Marty, you can check out, but you can never leave.
Yeah, right. He's an orig- he's one of the, one of the, one of the original eagles.
What he is.
Um, so I think the next point was, uh, excuse me, thank you, excuse me, um, three point three that, um, uh, Pat Day.
Three point one three?
What, three point three zero?
Three point three zero, okay.
This is pretty standard stuff, isn't it, Lee? This paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah, I liked it.
Uh, the waste disposal?
Yeah.
Snow removal? Yeah, that's pretty standard.
I'm, I'm just reading her note, three point three. It may not be significant, however, no childcare operations.
Oh, you mean three point three?
Oh. Yes.
Said three point three oh.
Right, I think you meant three point three.
I apologize, I, I'll, I'll admit it, I'm not perfect all the time.
You were going backwards, too, to confuse.
We're going back to three point three?
Yes, the hours of operation.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that. Didn't we already talk about that, and Lee was gonna put in some exceptions? For trainings and social events and et cetera?
In response to Pat Day's comments?
It's not clear to me, it's not clear to me what you want done here, so I'd like some better direction.
Again, I don't wanna take this up until Evans says he adopts her questions and recommendations.
Okay, so we're at that point. So should we bring only as it relates to Pat's po- comments? Shall we, if Evans is here, shall we, do you wanna bring him in now, or do you wanna continue?
It's like the answer to that question, does he adopt him, doesn't he?
So, I'm checking to see if he's here, and he is here. So we'll bring him over, but for the limited point to deal with Pat Day's comments, yeah?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Huber. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
So, I, I have you seen the comments that Pat Day has uh emailed to Lee? Are you familiar with those? Do you want us to review those with you?
Sure.
So, uh, in paragraph three point three zero of the decision, which relates to the hours of operations, uh, she says, no, uh, which starts, no childcare, which relates to the operations, administrators were, administrators work on weekends, especially during licensing and accreditation for brief periods. EEC regulations concerning ra- ratios and schedule uh make most training CPR, first aid, security, intruder pr- uh, training, uh, short term special events happen for a few hours and frequently from five thirty to seven in the evening or on Saturday afternoons. This is probably just a few times a year, so parents and grandparents uh in a certain program can attend. It's not the whole NCC families, and certainly not frequently. Supercleanings, regular cleaning happen on the weekends, as does maintenance, such as painting and playground cleaning, painting, adding uh mulch, fence repair. Uh, it all has to happen while the children are not present. Could it read instead, no regularly scheduled childcare shall be allowed on Saturday or Sunday? Are you okay with what she's talking about before we take it up?
Evans, I just wanna put it in context. What three point three now says is no childcare operations shall be allowed on Saturday or Sunday.
And she wants it to say, no regularly scheduled childcare shall be allowed on Saturday and Sunday.
Well, I'm actually looking at three point three on my other screen right now. Um, it sounds like, based on what you read me, that she probably actually wants the first sentence of three point three also changed, because that says, the hours of operation shall be limited to seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday. And she's saying, if I understand what you read me, she's saying she wants there to be the ability to have some sorts of operations on Saturday.
She also wants to have some things after six PM.
Yeah.
But it's not childcare. It's like meetings with parents.
Right. So, so to answer Marty's question, yes, I adopt these requests on her behalf. I think we do need to just make sure that the language is changed in a way that reflects her request.
Okay, I understand that, that's fair. While we're here and we have you, her next comment was for paragraph article three point four, which currently reads, the maximum number of children present at the childcare facility at any given time shall not exceed one hundred and fifteen. The maximum number of childcare employees uh, or staff inclusive of teachers, instructors, and administrators present at any given time shall not exceed eighteen. And her comment is, as there is one extra space due to the uh need and parking bylaw formula, could the planning board allow that one? could the planning board allow that one space to have flexible use such as occupational therapy or speech therapists that might come in in off-peak hours to work with a child? Could the language in three point four reflect that?
It's up to you, Evans. I think it's, I think it's totally unnecessary. But.
Totally unnecessary because you think that what she's describing would be allowed under this decision, or totally unnecessary because what she's requesting is not necessary?
Uh, the former.
Okay. I mean, there's a lot of detail in this decision, so I guess it wouldn't necessarily be inappropriate to include something, just, you know, perhaps for her own peace of mind to make sure that if she's having this, you know, hypothetical nineteenth person who could qualify as a staff member on site, she doesn't have to worry that she's violating the.
I disagree with you, Marty. I think that if she's got eighteen staff people there already and, and an OT comes in for an hour to work with a child.
That's not staff.
Not staff, not an employee. But anyways, for Evan's purpose, do you want us to take this up?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Are there any other, I mean, I've been listening, I've been listening, obviously, so I, I know that you were planning to ask me about some Pat Day related requests. Were there others besides these?
One more, one more. The, the final one is per, is article three point three one, which currently reads, all deliveries and trash dumpsters pickup shall occur only between the hours of nine thirty AM and four PM Monday through Saturday. Not at all on Sundays and holidays. The dumpster shall be screened with wooden, with a wooden fence, which shall be maintained in good condition. The dumpster shall be empty, clean, maintained to meet Board of Health standards. She makes a comment. For more than thirty years.
I'm sorry, Adam, what, what's the section number?
Three thirty one.
Article three point three one, three point three one. Page thirty one.
Yeah, okay.
You have it?
Yes.
So she's, she says, for more than thirty years, we have the same company pick up the trash between seven and seven thirty once or twice a week. This is a safety issue we established long ago. As a child, could it read? And then she says seven dash four thirty. I don't know if she meant seven to seven thirty?
No, I think it sounds to me like what she's saying is she wants the ability to have somebody come at seven in the morning, rather than no earlier than nine thirty as it currently reads.
So here's the only, so well, the question for you at this point before the board takes it up is, do you want us to take that up?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks, Evan.
Okay. So.
If, if I'm, if that's the end of what you want to inquire me, I, I do have a question for the board.
Yes.
Do you, do you anticipate getting to a vote tonight?
It's already eleven fifteen.
I don't think so, because there's more to go through and we have other points on our agenda.
Okay.
Lee, are you?
Well, I'm just gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna probably need at some point maybe a special meeting. I mean, the clock is ticking here. We have ninety days from the date of the close of the hearing to make a decision, and the hearing closed on December the eighth, so we need to get this done in February.
I'm available. Do you want to send out some times, Lee, when we can continue this?
Yes.
Okay, so we can do a doodle poll and find times when we're all available. And then pick up at that time.
I'd love to wrap this up tonight, but there've been so many changes, little changes, but still they're wording things that we all need to take a look at. I don't know how we could finalize it tonight.
I don't have many more changes.
No, but we have to take up these three that Pat Day has raised.
Yes, that's right.
That the petitioner has not raised.
Don't we still have some things on Evans' list that we haven't talked about yet?
Yeah, we have those too.
I, I'm just trying to understand, I'm, I, I am not making any advocacy, I'm just wondering whether the board anticipates reaching a decision tonight.
Ready to go to bed now, but that's a different story. Eleven fifteen.
I was ready to go to bed an hour.
Having at least another half hour or more of discussion here, and I don't know that we want to go until midnight.
Okay, so then why don't we do this? So Evans, I'm going to say that we're going to have to pick this up. Lee is going to give us a doodle poll to fill out to find out when we can all meet next on this. And then we'll take up, we'll start, we'll end here for now. We still have other items on our main agenda. And given the hour, we'll then reconvene to pick up Pat's comments, any other comments the board has, and some of the comments from your letter of July thirty one. Yes, Evans?
I take it that whenever you schedule your next meeting, which sounds like it might not be one of the regularly scheduled meetings, you would like me to be in attendance, so if necessary, you can bring me over, is that correct?
What say the board?
You know, I, I think it would be, my reaction is I think it would be to your advantage to be available, but I guess I would leave it to you.
Right, I'm just.
I think.
I, I assume, are you saying, can I assume that you're talking about seven o'clock some evening? You're not talking about a meeting during working hours?
We might be talking about a meeting first thing one morning, but sometimes that's when we can get together.
Possible.
Eight o'clock in the morning.
I, I, likelihood of that is I could make that. Regardless of what morning it is.
I think one way or the other, Evans, Evans has to be given notice of when we're meeting, so if he wants to be there, he can be there.
I understand. I, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, we try to make it at a time you can make it.
Okay, well, as, if, if it turns out that it's eight in the morning, I think it's a ninety-nine percent chance likelihood that I can make it. I don't schedule anything at that hour. So, and if it's in the evening, you know, it's starting at seven or whatever, that, that's likely fine as well.
I'll bring the scrambled eggs.
Okay.
Anyone else have anything else, a question for Evan at this time, Evans at this time? All right, Evans, thank you very much for clarifying that. We will pick up on this at our next meeting.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
You very much. And Mr. Chair, I return the gavel to you.
Somebody let Natasha know.
Yes, I will send her a text as I promised.
Since our next meeting, Lee.
We had that special meeting we just scheduled around the breweries, which I think is Wednesday. Alex, can you help me out? What time we're meeting on Wednesday? Would we finally decide?
That's four PM on Wednesday the ninth.
Thanks, Adam. I was trying to run to the bathroom, and of course, the one time you asked me a question, I was like, all right, I can go.
You can go.
And the regularly scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's to discuss, is that, is that to discuss breweries?
Uh, no, that's for, that's for the Wednesday, that's for Wednesday.
The brewery meeting is Wednesday, February nine at four PM.
Oh, and what's the time you were just giving? That's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, that's for the brewery.
Yeah.
Four PM.
Right.
I think that meeting should be held at the James.
The next regularly scheduled board meeting is Tuesday, February fifteenth. Hi Natasha, welcome back.
And I will not, two things for me, that, I'll be in Puerto Rico, and it's my birthday.
Which?
The fifteenth.
Can you attend by Zoom?
She's told us for months, she, we scheduled that meeting knowing she wouldn't be there, so don't worry about it, Jean.
Yeah, so we've got.
That's on the calendar, she's not coming.
We have got to deal with sixteen eighty-eight soon, before the fifteenth.
Right.
When are you leaving for Puerto Rico?
Not till the thirteenth, Sunday the thirteenth.
Sunday the thirteen.
I'm here all, all next week.
So we still have days this week and we have days next week to do. It's going to be done by the eleventh.
We don't really have days this week because we have to post an agenda forty-eight business hours in advance.
And just so you know, next week we have, I, I've got to, you know, I've got to write the zoning for the breweries. I haven't even started it because I've been doing sixteen eighty-eight, and we have a housing working group meeting next week too, so there's already two meetings on the calendar for next week, so next week's difficult.
Respect, Lee, if we have to postpone the brewery meeting, we'll postpone the brewery meeting.
Okay, but I need to get, I, I've been promising the zoning for the Springtown meeting, I, okay.
We have more important things to deal with.
Would it be crazy to extend our meeting on the ninth?
Yeah.
Beyond five?
I'm fine with that.
Uh, yeah, sure.
And Natasha could leave right at the, right at five, or whatever the brewery's done.
Yeah. Yeah, why not? I mean, but rather than trying to schedule something twice, just make this one longer, yeah.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Lee?
Yeah, I just, you know, I've, I've got to write the zoning for the brewery, so, but if all we're going to do is kind of finish this decision up and talk about the remainder items, so I'm not doing any, any, any real prep on the decision we've already drafted, then that's, that works.
Yeah, I can't go any earlier that day. I have another meeting, but I can go later.
Alex, are you able to send a, an updated invite?
Yeah.
To go from four to six?
Six, sure, yeah, I can update that.
Yes.
No, we could do that. We could finish.
When you say four to six, Evan didn't say that that's a time that he could make. He said eight o'clock in the morning or seven o'clock. He didn't say he could make it within, between four and six.
Send him a text right now and ask if he's available for that hour.
At five, right?
Correct.
I can, I can email him, yeah, he's gone.
I have a community preservation committee meeting at seven that night, so.
Yeah, it's.
It's a three, it's a three-meeting day.
Yeah, I, I've got a meeting that evening, but I would be able to miss that meeting if I had to. Next week, I could, if we had a morning meeting, I could do Tuesday the eighth, Wednesday the ninth, Friday the eleventh. I can't do Thursday the tenth, I've got another meeting in the morning.
Yeah, I could do that.
The only one I could be sure of making is February eleventh, the Friday.
Should, should I offer the February ninth? And at, at five-ish, and then February eleventh at eight? Both of those?
Can I ask a favor? Can you, you sent out a doodle poll with those times that Paul just ran off?
Um, well, Marty can do.
Marty said, Marty said the eleventh is the only day that he can be sure that he can make it.
Between the eighth, ninth, and eleventh, that's, that's true.
Yeah, so. So it's either the, the ninth after the brewery or the eleventh. And if we do it on the ninth, Jean has the leaving time for her, well, yeah, but you're doing it all by Zoom, right, Jean?
Right, the community preservation, yeah, totally Zoom.
Yeah.
So my, my son, my wife just put something in the calendar tonight, but she didn't identify a specific time that my son has his first violin concert. And given that he's just picked this instrument up and has been doing a good job, I really would like on Fri, at Friday, the, Friday the eleventh, but I don't know if that's.
It's not going to be eight o'clock in the morning, because he has to go to school.
Right, but if school doesn't start until, if school doesn't start until eight thirty or so, or eight forty.
You're talking about a recital?
A concert of some kind. So it's going to be, it, it could be at seven thirty in the morning until.
Yeah, check, check with your wife, but I doubt it.
He had, he, I'm telling you, he has violin practice early in the morning on other days of the week. So it's possible that they may do this concert early in the morning.
Check.
I will, and I'll get back to you. And it also sounded like Marty that you needed to con, uh, confirm with your calendar on those dates, so that's why I wasn't sure if doing the doodle poll was the easiest way, so we're not dealing with it now.
The eighth and ninth are not going to work for me.
The eighth and ninth are not going to work for you.
The eleventh will work at eight AM. Just so you all know, at eleven AM that morning, I have to be on a FaceTime call with my son, who's going to be getting married at eleven AM Friday morning.
Muzzle.
In Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Wow.
Congratulations.
By FaceTime, yes.
Does he need a violin concert?
He is a violinist.
So.
And a pianist, yeah.
That's wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations, muzzle top.
Thank you.
That's great.
So also make the ninth, you know, at five.
All right, folks, it's eleven thirty. So let's see if we can rush through what's left on our agenda. Minutes, do I have a motion?
Uh, yeah, I've got a bunch of minutes here. I, do you want to go down all of them? Why don't I start with the ones where I have no questions?
That would be great.
Any else is good, then we can accept them.
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of April twentieth, twenty twenty-one?
Yes, you do.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I call for a vote. Uh, to accept.
Jean, I don't remember giving you the gavel.
That's right, I'm, I'm assuming.
But that's okay, go for it.
All right, so to call the roll on that. Martin Jacobs.
Aye.
Paul Alford.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
Vote, Jean.
October nineteenth.
Don't forget to vote, Jean.
Oh, and they, and I am I, I'm, I was going to say the chair is I. And I am I. All right, so now we have October nineteen. Anybody have any questions on October nineteen?
One, right?
Excuse me?
Yeah, I move to accept those.
Second.
As amended.
Yeah, as, as amended with the red line, it was distributed, right? And so, uh, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Time for a vote?
Time for a vote.
All right. Marty.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Natasha.
Aye.
And I am I. All right, so we've got the nineteenth done.
Isn't that in the book of Exodus? Doesn't God say that to Moses? I am I. God says, who are you?
But does he say, I need Poe, I am here?
Okay, so that was the nineteenth. Oh, now we have the twentieth of October. This was just our brief meeting um, on the day of the special town meeting. So I have, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of October twenty-fifth?
Move to accept them.
Right. And motion and a second? Call for vote, Marty?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
And Jean is I, all right. So then I have Facebook, the, the minutes of November eighth were in our packet last meeting, but we, we didn't get to any, we didn't get to do the minutes. Is that all right? That, I'm not sure they were in our packet for this meeting, but they were in the packet for the last meeting. Should I go ahead and call for a vote, a motion on that?
Sure.
November eighth.
So November eight or November two?
November eighth. We have. November eight, we have, um. November two as well, but November eight was in our packets for our last meeting. But we di- didn't, um, take it up.
Okay. Yes, good.
I moved to accept them.
Second.
Alright, um, a call for vote on minutes of November eighth, Marty?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
And Jean is aye, so, uh, October twenty-fifth on the second page. Oh, I, I, it's just an error I made, so I wanna make sure that, uh, Lee, if you would. I, I don't know, I don't know if I made it or what, but this paragraph that begins, Mr. Block asked if Mr. Jacobs was thinking. Of five feet in paragraphs one and two, and for some reason, there's a hyphen after five. It doesn't need to be a hyphen, that's wrong, so if we could just say, we'll make that one change, you're getting rid of that hyphen. Okay? So with that one change to the red line version of October fifth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, do I have a motion?
Yep.
Second.
Alright, and second, and I'll call for vote, Marty?
Yes, aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Alright, so now we're in the minutes of November second, and I actually have two questions, yeah. One, well, actually, three questions, um, one is on the first page, we're talking about the hybrid plug-in car. Mr. Half stated his hybrid plug-in car takes about two hours to charge, but he only gets twenty miles. Is that a typo?
Yeah, it should be two hundred.
It should be two hundred, yeah, that's what I thought, and I did put it in, but I just didn't wanna make that change without.
Excuse me, that's, that's not accurate, I ran this by Hank Half and he corrected it, he, he. Um, made sure that the facts were accurate, and it is twenty.
Oh.
He only gets twenty miles on two hours.
It is what, it's twenty?
You're correct.
Oh goodness. That's strange, alright, so I guess we leave it at twenty. Alright, so that, that would be a change from the red line. Then at the bottom of page two, um, we're talking about the hearing on, um. The childcare, of course, um, Mr. Block reviewed the ground real rules for the hearing. When any new information is provided by applicants. The, it, what it said is attorney will return back to the public for any questions. Must have been the chair will return back to the public for any questions.
Correct.
Yeah, so, alright, I made that que- change, but I made it with a question mark, because maybe there was something special being said. Okay, the chair, alright, now we're on page six. Oh, yeah, um, this was a comment by Patricia Falco. Um, and she, she complains, um, in the one, two, three, four, fifth line. They are asking for over one acre of commercial use, referring to the daycare. Uh, this is a one acre, oh, wait a minute, excuse me, this should not be put in with rezoning. Does she mean this should not be put in without rezoning? I mean, what else could she mean? It doesn't make sense to say this should not be put in with rezoning.
What page, what page are you on?
I'm on page six, it's right in the middle, long paragraph, it starts Patricia Falco. And sixth line down. I, I guess she's thinking, this kind of thing shouldn't be allowed without there being a zoning bylaw amendment, but.
She might mean this shouldn't be allowed under zoning.
Yes.
But th- then the word says rezoning.
I, I know, but that could just be a miscommunication.
So Alex, you think it should be, this is a one acre, a visit, uh, this, excuse me. This should not be put in with zoning?
I think it should. Be, this should not be allowed under zoning.
Or we can just keep it and sa- leave it this way, this should not be put in, period, that's the point that she was.
Yeah, sure, sure.
Alright, this is a bit of confusion about the other words, yeah, this should not be put in, period, okay. Alright, so with those, uh, four changes. To the red line, so moved, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we go to a vote, Marty?
Yes, aye.
Um, Paul?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
And Jean is aye, and so we have completed six, two, three, four, six sets of minutes, isn't this marvelous?
Dean, good to have you back.
I'll keep the, uh, ones that we made some slight changes, uh, just to make sure that. Uh, if there's any questions about the changes, I've got some notes on them, throw the others away. Excellent.
Report from planning director.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'll make it brief, um, Paul and, um, Adam and I are going to the finance committee tomorrow. To defend the budget for the planning and community development department, and I don't, I'm, I'm optimistic that we won't get any pushback. Um, on the, on the overall budget proposal, um, we did a housing, um, working group meeting. That was a listening session with the community that was very well attended, I think it went well. Uh, I don't know if, if Jean and Natasha wanna provide any details on it, but there's, I think you, if you didn't attend, you should look at the recording of the meeting. Um, and then, of course, next week, we're planning on, um, meeting on the breweries and closing out this, off this app. This, this, um, this, this application. And I'm tired, and that's all I, I have to report.
Good.
Now, we, we had sixty-nine attendees, in addition to, you know, the thirteen, uh, working group members. So I would call it well-attended, and we had about a, a do- a dozen comments. And, um, besides some comments from the working group, and, um, I, I, yeah, it was a good. Good program. I've, I, I've gotten compliments on the presentations, both mine and Karen's. From people who said that was really interesting, that was really good.
Zoning history, I heard, was very effective.
Oh, good, good, Adam, good.
I think the two presentations were super effective, and then I also thought that we got a lot of really good feedback from the community. That we can now, uh, move forward with, um, and so the next meeting for the community is on March sixteenth, I believe. Is it sixteenth or twenty?
Next week, Thursday, I think.
No, 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 for the community, it's in March.
Oh, in March, on the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth, and so, um. I think, um, there was a lot of engagement, which was really great, so look forward to see what comes out of this.
Could I offer a couple very quick comments? Because I listened, and first, someone made the point, Paula, I think was her name. That twelve point seven percent S H I, sounds like a good number, but the real number is six point two percent of real. And I think she's, that's a real important thing to keep in mind.
I agree, the other one was market rate.
Yes, right, and the question was raised by Peter Olive, why did lot sizes increase in nineteen forty-eight? Real good question, doesn't, totally counterintuitive. There was a discussion about the new Massachusetts law to encourage multifamily housing near transportation, could be a big deal. I think we need to lo- know more about that. The thing that stuck with me was, there were some questions and discussion about. Um, focusing on racial disparities, um, equal justice. And it strikes me that the focus of this committee, though, really should be on, how do we produce more affordable housing? It's not about race, as I see it. That's another problem, I'm not saying it's not a problem, but I think if you try to do too much on this committee. It, it's gonna hamper you, so, but I think the focus gotta be on producing more affordable housing for everybody. Elderly, young people, disabled, minorities, anybody who needs affordable housing. And, um, so, but I thought it was good, I, and I thought you got a lot of interesting comments and questions, so. Tough task, I think you have. Anyway, that's all I got.
Okay, um, didn't we have a couple of things, um, that came our way? Uh, um, we, uh, on the Latina outdoor dining, how have we left to that?
Um, I, uh, we have resolved the problem in that we're willing to accept, um. The, um, letter that they provided, and they're going to need, um, the, there is one other, I think. There, there's one store, um, in that building that's gonna need to modify their permit, because it currently requires that their deliveries be off the rear. I think the Little Spoon is gonna have to modify their permit so they can do deliveries on the street, and then Latina would need to come in. Um, and present the letter of, um, agreement with the abutter. And also modify their permit so that they don't have to do rear deliveries, and then I think we're, we'll be able to make it happen. Mary Ann Cooley, I think, followed up, I just got an email from her today with Stuart Rothman, who's the owner of the property, he's got no problem. Co-signing the applications from both parties, um, I think she was under the impression we were gonna prepare the application for Little Spoon. But that's not how it would work, Alex will have to reach out to Little Spoon and maybe help them just prepare a de minimis change application. That we could process, um, and then Latina, uh, we would coordinate with them on their outdoor dining application.
And then, yeah, apparently we're going to be on, uh, March first, uh, considering, uh, Wingate, uh, property there.
Yes, they're, they're gonna be filing, and then also coming up is, um, Needham Gateway. Um, with, you know, golf X and that medical use, they had talked to us about in, um. Uh, the other building on Highland Avenue next to Panera Bread.
And what's the stuff that came to us from, something about minor modification hearing for cardboard dumpsters?
Panera, uh, the, the, the Panera Plaza wants to, um, legalize the dumpster enclosure. They have adjacent to the building that they're using for, uh, cardboard. Your base permit just only allowed them to have that one dumpster in the center of their parking lot. And they put that other dumpster in, the neighbors were complaining, um, and I think we told him that if he wanted to make that permit, and he was gonna need to do it formally. So we're doing it as a de minimis change, but we sent a notice out to all the, all the abutters. So they're aware that it's on our agenda for next, next meeting.
Are we gonna be able to hear from the neighbors?
I think you're gonna have to do almost like a modified. I think, I think you're gonna have to open it up to their comments. Even though we didn't advertise it as a hearing, I.
No, but a minor modification, I mean, you know, the objection would be you should have done it as a hearing so that we could see, so, just.
Can I move to adjourn, or I'm just gonna pop out?
Well, we only have one quick thing that says correspondence, and I'm just gonna point out that we got, that we got some emails on eighty-eighty-eight Great Plains Avenue. And they are in the packet, now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Adam?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Natasha?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
I vote aye, we're adjourned.